Excuse me for a second, everybody. As everybody in this room that wants to address the board tonight on this list, just so I make sure that we have everybody accounted for and we don't miss anyone. I know there've been some folks walking in the last minute or so since I've had this. There is another list. You can see Megan if you want to jump on last minute. But otherwise, I've got about 36 people tonight wishing to address the board. So just want to make sure anybody who wants to talk that's in this room tonight is on the list. So if not, let us know. Thank you.
We're live.
Oh, okay. And with that, we're going to go live. Good evening, everybody. Welcome. Thank you for coming tonight. This is the Monday, October 25th, 2021, regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting. Before we get going tonight, could you please, I know there are a lot of us in here, put your phones on silent and if you have a second, take a minute and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, Mr. Hatfield, would you please take role?
All right. President McFarland.
Here.
Vice President Roush.
Here.
Secretary Hatfield is here. Treasurer Lotterbach.
Here.
Member Baker.
Here.
Member Blasey.
Here.
Member Fraze.
Here.
All present and accounted for.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That brings us to our consent agenda. We have item 2.1, which is approval of the minutes from September 20, 2021, regular meeting. 2.2 is a list of staff that have announced their resignation and effective dates. 2.3 is a list of teachers recommended for employment. 2.4 is the recommendation of the renewal of the Adult Ed Cooperative Agreement between Bullet Creek School District, Coleman Community Schools, Meridian Public Schools, and Midland Public Schools for the 2021, '22, and 2022, '23, and 2023, '24 school years. Item 2.5 is approval of the payment of the school systems bills for the months of July and August 2021 is listed in the check registers prepared by Ms. Holderby in the total amount of $20,978,960. Payment is recommended. The distribution of funds is included in the documentation. Finally, item 2.6 in the consent agenda is approval of a legal bill in the amount of $689 dated August 26, 2021 for professional legal fees.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Lotterbach, support by Mr. Hatfield. Any further discussion regarding items 2.1 through 2.6?
In 2.5, we have purchase orders listed, and under one of those is Barton Mallow, 220090. Barton Mallow builders for a total of $933,389.61. Looking a little bit further at the backup information for that in the packet, can see that we were invoiced. Midland Public was invoiced. It was received June 29 as stamped received by the MPS Business Office. It was marked for pay July 16, which I'm sure it was paid right away. So that is a 17-day turnaround in a net 30 agreement. That is awesome. That is phenomenal. The only problem is the contractors that are listed in the back of that packet, handful of these people aren't paid as of today. That's shameful. And I think we need to look into that.
Okay. Who is not paid that you know of? And how do you know?
I know a handful of them aren't, just from being in the business of contracting, and I'm with these people week in, week out, day in, day out.
So those are subs for Barton Mallow that weren't paid? Is that what you're saying?
They're all direct contracts.
Barton Mallow's a contract, construction manager.
Yep.
So they're not subs. They don't sub anybody. They're all ours. And we've been through this before, and we can check into it, but often there's a rationale behind it. Brad, when money's retained for work on our benefit, work not completed, work not completed satisfactory. So we can look into that.
Well, one of the contractors is the bleachers that we sat in for nine weeks.
Yeah, there's issues there. So we have several issues on the bleachers as well.
And there's other contractors that are involved with this as well that are calling and/or talking to me in job walks and saying that it's not a 45 to 60 that they sign, it's 90 to 120. And that's not right.
Well, we checked before, many years ago.
Well, we checked before, and we found out that we were, on average, at 67 days. When we're signing an agreement with 45 to 60 days, that means 50%, we were breach of contract, 50% we weren't.
Well.
So that's not very good.
And I'll remind you, that was a one time, and it was during there was a change of software. So we can check again. But if you recall back then, they were off by seven days and they had switched their software.
Yeah, but that was for the first 45 million of the 120 million. It wasn't an insignificant dollar amount or an insignificant time period.
Brad, I'm not arguing with you. I'm just telling you.
You did your job. I'm just saying our sub is not doing their job in paying these people in a timely manner.
Yep.
MPS, awesome turnaround.
Is it Barton Mallow that's supposed to pay them, or is it us?
Barton Mallow.
So we've paid Barton Mallow, okay? Barton Mallow has not paid the contractors?
Correct.
Okay. We should look into it.
That's what I said. We'd like to look into it.
But that's not on the district. That's on Barton Mallow.
They're our employee, our contractor.
No question. No question.
Yep. Thank you.
But does that jump to conclusion why yet?
No, we're just going to ask the question, find out.
Yep.
It's fair.
All right. Thanks, Brad.
Also listed in there is, in that purchase order listing, is Plant Moran. And the Plant Moran is for ERP and SIS Selection Project, Open PO for remainder of project of $31,700, which is Enterprise Resource Planning and Student Information System. What is that?
So those words may not be familiar with you, but we've updated you a couple times on that. And so that's the replacement of our software for our student database, as well as our business office, which is antiquated, no longer going to be serviced. It's hodgepodge together to hold the last few years. And so it's difficult to switch for all the users, so we have put that off. And so if you recall, we had Plant Moran assisting us in that selection process. Do you want to add anything, Brian?
Yeah.
So that is in Dave's area. He's been reviewing. We've held work group sessions reviewing. How many companies, Dave?
Three on the ERP side and five on the student information system side.
Okay. So do we have, we don't have any progress in that?
Yep.
Because I see it's open, that we haven't paid them anything?
November board meeting.
It comes to the November board meeting.
Okay.
So it'll go to FFO meeting, and then come to the November board meeting.
So is the $31,000 spent, or is that open?
I don't know. We'd have to look into what's been spent.
It's still monthly as they, as they work.
So they're not done yet?
So we have one last thing.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments, 2.1 through 2.6? All in favor, say aye.
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 opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. That brings us up to 3.1, our shining stars. Mr. Sherrill.
Yeah, so I think we have them present tonight, but I'm going to read a little bit about our candidates, and we'll bring them up and congratulate them. So our first shining star of tonight is Robin Renke. Hopefully I said that right, Robin, if you're in the audience. Thank you. Mr. Renke joined the MPS team in 2019 as a bus driver in the MPS Transportation Department. Just before joining MPS, Robin retired from the Dow Chemical following a 30-year career. An MPS colleague shared the following: "Robin is extremely dependable and good-natured employee who is always willing to fill in for others at the last minute. It is very evident that he genuinely likes his job and enjoys his students." Robin was nominated for the shining star by an MPS parent. Among their comments were the following: "Mr. Robin is the real deal. He has shown great enthusiasm each morning while he stops to pick up our children. Always friendly, always excited to see the kids. He has ensured safety and has a smiling face under his mask for all his riders. Great communication when his bus route changed slightly, which was much appreciated." Robin, if you could come on up, we'll give you a big hand.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This means I'll go on. I know I'm doing something right, so that's good. I've always wanted a fun job. When I retired from Dow, I wanted a fun job. I always thought, if I'm a school boss, you'd have a fun job, and it has been so far. A lot of my colleagues at Dow thought I was crazy. No way. I love it, so.
Talk a few more.
Thank you.
We could use a few more of those, right? Yeah. Our second shining star is Lindsay Timmerman. Lindsay's career highlights are: "Ms. Timmerman joined the MPS team in 2020 as the Jefferson Middle School Counselor. Before coming to MPS, Lindsay served as a Behavior Assistant at Indianapolis Public Schools. Lindsay earned her Master of Science degree in School Counseling from Butler University in 2020 and her Bachelor of Arts degree from Hope College in 2015." Lindsay was nominated for a shining star by an MPS parent. Among their comments were the following: "We are new to the district. We recently located from another state. Our children go to Jefferson, and Ms. Timmerman has been so amazing with resources, helping them to get to know the school, teachers, and other students. She really went above and beyond what was asked of her. I am so grateful she was there during this transitional time for our children. She is our shining star." Lindsay, if you'd come up, we'll give you a big hand.
Hold on for one second. Okay. All right. We'll be off agenda just for a second here. I know we went from 3.1. Next up on the agenda is request to address the board. But before we get there, I'm going to ask Mr. Sherrill to provide us with a couple comments, maybe a little insight regarding COVID, where we are in schools, masking policies, and maybe talk for a minute, if you can, about surveys.
Yes. So currently with COVID, MPS has been averaging about 50 active COVID cases on a daily basis. We'll top 300 overall cases in our district this month that we've had since the start of the school year. That seems to have leveled off, and so it's, we're in that ballpark. As well as our county, our state data seems to have leveled off. But they haven't seen decreases yet. And so if you talk to the Health Department, you know, they're really looking for that decrease that they've seen a little bit in other places that were hot prior to us. And so they're expecting still we're going to see a decline at some point here in November. Our elementary numbers, all except for Seaver, have been fabulous. And so if you look at our elementary, something's worked pretty well, and we've decreased those numbers very, very well. Seaver's a little bit hot right now in those cases. Our secondaries have gotten a little hotter, but you've got to keep that number in mind with the proportion of high school students or middle school students we have in that building and staff as well. And so if you've seen that number grow from three or four students a day to six to eight right now at our secondary buildings with the positive cases. So all in all, not bad. And I think this week or early next week, we're hearing that the vaccination availability for parents to choose for the 5- to 11-year-olds may be approved. So the next question will be, and I've heard availability in November. I'm not sure when in November locally. And so I believe that would assist us, because we've been pretty consistent where we've had the possibility for parents to choose vaccination, as well as choose their mask, that we've allowed that as choice. And so I think the key for us through this, for the 5- to 11-year-olds, is that vaccination piece. And so I think we're getting closer with the numbers maybe leveled, decreasing, vaccination coming. I think we are very close to probably returning parents back to where we start the school year with the 5- to 11-year-olds, maybe as choice. We'd still recommend mask, but it would return to a choice atmosphere. Now, how fast? I think we should probably review this before our November board meeting once we know when vaccination availability. And I don't know if I've even heard if it's a two-shot or a one-shot for these younger children. And so do you want to wait for one shot? Do you want to wait for two shots? What do we want to do on those? And by then, as that comes out in the next few weeks, maybe we'll see the decline that we're hoping in our numbers as well, and we'll be able to make a more solid decision. So certainly the administration will look at that with the Health Department, bringing you guys that recommendation on masking. So hopefully that helps a little bit, that we're seeing light near the end of the tunnel on that piece. The surveying, so we've had two surveys, one that has occurred and a second one that's going to occur this week. The first survey, if you recall, was our DEI survey with an outside firm. The second survey that's occurred this week is also partners with MPS on the Legacy Center and Midland Kids First. So after the first survey, we had some parents that had some difficulty with some of the questions that were on that. So when this survey was reviewed, we noticed the questions being very similar. And I know the questions come out that these are the same questions were asked in the past. Well, it's partially true. So gender's been asked, but not with the descriptors that were used this time. That has changed from the previous time that they gave us years in the past to now. And so when we looked at all of this, it appears, and when I say "we," the four county school districts took a look at this, and we asked those to be the change so we can review our policies. So we need time to review, because I think we have multiple things we need to address. Should we be surveying children, period, with outside organizations? Should we have parent opt-in or parent opt-out? What age level are those type of questions appropriate for? And how valid is the data really when you survey students on this data? And so in looking at that, that was the decision of the four county superintendents, talking to the Legacy Center and Midland Kids First. And so we will review that as we go forward and try to figure out and bring, and it'll probably come to Administrative Services, which Brad and Phil sit on, and we'll take a look at that policy and bring that to you. And looking at that, because I've done a little research in the quick few weeks looking at this, and there are some district policies that don't allow outside surveys at all. And so these are partner surveys, so there's a fine line there as well. And so maybe we need to take a review in light of what has occurred in the last two surveys. So if that helps, we'll review that and we'll bring that forward as well. Because I know both of those have been hot topics out there.
Okay. And the hot topics are going to continue right now.
Correct.
All right. So that brings us to our request to address the board. For those of you who were not here last month, guys, let's be a model of civility tonight. I know there are some pretty strong opposing views on a number of issues that will probably be discussed tonight. So let's just, let's keep it civil. Let's keep it respectful. And listen, there's 36 people wanting to address the board tonight, so we are going to limit the comments to three minutes, just like we did last time, just out of respect for everybody toward the end of the list. We don't want people having to wait here until 11 o'clock at night waiting to address the board. Let's try and get in. Keep your comments as concise as possible. I will make every effort to let you finish your thoughts, but when you hear that buzzer go off, please try and end comments there so the next person in line can get up and speak. That being said, Jimmy Sheets, you are up first, sir. Floor is yours. Thank you for coming tonight.
How are we doing tonight? Thanks for, as most of you know, this is my second meeting. The first one took a profound effect on me, Toll, in understanding what you guys do. And as you can see, what this has done to this room sitting here, where you have people completely divided. In my opinion, that's not the way things should have been. But here we are, November 1. Mr. Sherrill, you told me two weeks back on September 1. We're still not there. This brings me to my first point.
Jimmy, I don't think I told you two weeks. I said it could be two weeks. So you need to be accurate.
Okay, yes, yes.
If you're going to use my words, be accurate, please.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't know we would be going back and forth. So this goes about the defense on the actions of the board, because, Mr. Sherrill, from what I understand, that it wasn't just them, it was you that made the decision to put a mask on my kid, and that the board doesn't assist you in that, and they won't do that. That's their words, not mine, okay? That you made this decision solely because Fred, who runs the Health Department, wouldn't do it, so we took it upon ourselves to be proactive instead of reactive. That's from what I'm being told, okay? And so the fact is that you took my child's safety on your own and her medical decisions in your own hands, in my opinion, is completely unacceptable, okay? Numbers have shown a constant with or without masks, okay? I know you just went on spot on your things, but I mean, you see that trend with or without masks. Why is it that my other children who go to private schools, or any people that go to even big private schools, who don't have masks, have no problems, or small, isolated problems? But they're able to handle them calmly and still maintain the integrity of my rights when it comes to my children, okay? So I don't understand why, when it comes to public schools, they don't adopt or do what private schools are doing, because they're doing it all over the country. It makes no sense to me. But the common thing that I hear from you guys and why we don't have masks, or we're worried about, without masks, our teachers are getting sick. Then we must go back to online learning. Is that what you want? Okay? That's the normal thing that we hear. But my problem is, too, is when it comes to the faculty at the school getting sick, I mean, do we not remember the olden days in 2017, 2018, 2019, when people got sick before, okay, and people needed time off when they were feeling under the weather? We see a large pool of your substitute teachers. Are they not available? Do they not able to be used? So that's a question for me to you, okay? Most of you are willing to throw your hired superintendent under the bus and say, hey, he did it, not us. We don't touch this stuff, okay? So that's the point. And I don't know what it is, but here's a guy who made a call, let's say. You guys hired him. Why can't we address him and say, you made a bad call, okay? Or we're not comfortable with this. Instead, we sit here and we say, well, this isn't our position. We're not supposed to vote on this, but you guys hired him, okay? So this is where we're supposed to be. So if this is a personal decision on his point, this is poor leadership.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Needs to be addressed as such. So last but not least.
Jimmy, that's it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
We've got a lot of food to get through. Thank you, Mr. Sheets. Laura Alt.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. I want to start off by thanking you all for your community service and your dedication to our students. School Board member has been a very difficult, heavy responsibility, particularly in the last few years, and I appreciate the long hours and the dedication you show to our school district. Tonight, I'm coming to talk to you about building a bigger table for our students, so that everybody has a fair share and a seat at the MPS table, and that all voices are valued and heard. So building a bigger table, for me, is a metaphor for what I'd like to see happen in our school district. And at a table, you can imagine a family gathering around. They're sharing, they're communicating, they're recognizing and making connections, and there's a chance for everyone to be heard. So in recent years, this board has hired a Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Director, and has done a lot of talking about the DEI vision for our schools. However, some of the actions of this board send the message that you're not fully committed to that diversity, and you've missed some opportunities to practice equity and inclusion. And so my first example happened in July, when a seat on this board became available, and you, as a board, appointed a white male candidate, even though white men already held a majority on the board. You completely missed an obvious opportunity to build a bigger table and to allow a new and different voice to be heard. Instead, you invited a former board member, someone who had previously had a seat at the table, to return. And while Mr. Fraze is an experienced and qualified board member, you failed to show, as a board, that diversity is something that you actually believe in and will act upon. It's very disappointing that at an important moment, you all agreed to go with more of the same and to keep the status quo. And that's not the courageous leadership mentioned in the district's DEI vision, and it's not building a bigger table. So when my family moved here 15 years ago, I asked a school official why there was not more diversity among the district's employees. And I was told that it was difficult to recruit people of color to come to Midland Public, and that not many Asian-Americans were going into the education field, and that the student body was predominantly white, and so the staff reflected that. And I wonder if I asked that same question tonight, would I get those same answers? So it's time for Midland Public to really do the hard work and make sure that we're seeing an increase in the diversity of our school employees, and to start making sure that Black and Brown and Asian kids see themselves reflected in the teachers and the staff of our administration.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Melissa Busek. Melissa, did I say that right?
Busek.
Busek, sorry.
Hi, my name is Melissa Busek. I'm a mother of three in your district, and I'm a hard-working member of Rise Up Midland. I would like to address two items with you tonight. One, I would like to know how parents and concerned citizens in Midland are supposed to reach you. As you stated, you were worried about a lot of people coming to speak. Why are we waiting between meetings to have it build up? Why are we not addressing in between? Do you have a formal process? Is this the public comment, the process? My concerns from the September's meeting weren't addressed. Have we found a mask manufacturer that doesn't have disclaimers on their packaging about how they don't work? I don't think so. I haven't heard anything back. Then this public comment and emails don't appear to be working. I mean, I'm looking at you, and you look like you're frustrated, we're frustrated too. Can the audience members that came to the September meeting and spoke with concern stand up? And can you raise your hand if your concerns were addressed? I mean, this is a problem. I don't see us making connections with you. My second concern is, as a step to help you open communications on the mask mandate in particular, I made a written request last week. I sent it to all of you, and it was co-signed by 27 other members of Rise Up Midland, in particular to have the mask mandate be put on tonight's agenda. And it was ignored. I haven't gotten a response. I checked with your admin, and she told me that was the process to have it put on the agenda was to contact you. I'm going to read what my request said. "On behalf of a large, growing group of MPS parents, our numbers ranking over 1,000 members, the names listed below wanted to make an official request to have the MPS mask face covering policy be added to the October 25, tonight's school board meeting. The lack of clarity in closed-door decision process on this matter is only frustrating more and more parents. If you want to ease the growing tension, you need to stop hiding behind a policy. Parents feel unheard. True leaders don't bury their heads in the sand ignoring those they were elected to represent, and then frame said parents as the enemy. We can do better." I hear, I heard at the end of last meeting, the excuses you gave about what other districts have tried and how this meeting's not the place for this kind of discussion, and we can't interact back and forth with you. But then after the meeting, if you are only going to be able to follow up with two or three comments, when you lead a district of 7,000 students, why are you not stepping up? Let's not use the strategies that others are doing. Have we done a survey on mask mandate? Have we done a focus group? We need to stop being followers and start being leaders. I want a motion for a vote on the mask mandate."
Thank you, Ms. Busek. Will Zablocki. Welcome back, sir.
Thank you. Thanks again. Again, this is my second meeting in a row. I wrote something. I heard comments earlier that's going to make me trash about half this. So just to quickly get through this portion, this portion is all about what Melissa just said. It's a communication issue. I have respectfully worded several emails to the board. I have respectfully worded several emails to the board and to Mr. Charo, all together, received zero response in the last two months. The lack of communication I addressed at the last board meeting, which is, it's your duty. In fact, there's, aside from the superintendent's policy or the the board policy that says he has to engage us, there's also one that specifies you guys, which is your ethics board policy statement, which says that you need to interact with, they call us like other components of the community or something like that, not students, not staff, but other members of the community. Where is parents listed in that? The state law specifically says you need to engage parents. Parents are a crucial aspect of their child's education, and we're the ones that vote people in, we're the ones that pay the taxes as well. I'm sure you guys do too. But it's just, it's absolutely unacceptable. I mean, there's there's zero communication. I know we did a podcast, right? But then we also had four communiques with no discussion. You know that there's going to be a room full of people showing up and you don't even address it, you know, in any chance you can get. I mean, it 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 just doesn't make sense to me. It doesn't process. Originally, it was Mr. Charo and Mr. Janowski from the Health Department that made the mandate. He's no longer legally able to to stand behind that. He's not allowed to influence board policy or school mask mandates or vaccination policies. So I even kind of reject the wait until everyone can get vaccinated narrative. There's no difference between the high schools and middle schools as far as case counts, relatively speaking. We talk about the case counts, and this is where I'm going to deviate from this. The case counts, when Adams Elementary had their first outbreak, there were about 57 or 58 positive cases at that point. You implemented a mask mandate to solve the problem, and despite what the superintendent is saying, the numbers are still at that same level. So it it just goes to show that there's no rationale behind this other than that it's the federal government telling the state government, telling the Health Department, telling the school board. And we think that we have a lot of intelligent people in this community, and we think we should, we should have some more input from the board, start being more of a leader instead of a follower. And even the stats that that were referenced earlier, statewide stats, they're not local stats. You can't lump us in with Detroit and pretend that it's the same case. So thank you for your time.
Okay, next up is Ms. Nikki Sutter. Sutter, Sutter?
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I have two children enrolled at Adams Elementary, second and third grade boys. Prior to COVID, I was exceptionally proud of the school as well as the district my children have attended since preschool. However, the gross negligence of the superintendent and the entire school board has caused me to not only be alarmed about the effects on their learning ability while wearing masks, but also the medical ramifications to their health by the amount of CO2 and constant bacteria being breathed in for seven hours a day while at school. October 8th, I was made aware that my sons had a close contact. All officials were promptly notified. My children had a negative PCR, as did the rest of my household, but I was still required to keep them out of school for 10 days because I chose not to submit them to multiple tests that have a high failure rate. During this time, I went into school to gather their work so they would not fall behind. I made the mistake of wearing my son's mask that he had wore to school the day I picked him up because of the close contact, and I had only had it on for about 15 minutes while speaking to Mr. Cochran. Two days later, my oldest and I, we were on our way to the doctors. My son was treated for severe bronchitis, never having a respiratory illness ever before in his life. I was also treated for bronchitis, double ear infection, and a fungal infection in my mouth. Dr. Christopher Cummings attributed it to me wearing my son's mask full of bacteria. It has been proven time and time again that these masks are not worn correctly by children and are covered in a petri dish of bacteria. My second grader has been diagnosed with ADD, ODD, and anxiety, and school has been a struggle, but working with his teachers, principal, and doctors, we have implemented things to help such as therapy, medication, and an IEP. Even though he struggles, he was making huge strides in every subject. Then came the mask mandate. It has impacted his already short ability to focus and pay attention, impacted his classmates as his fidgeting and sometimes even chewing on his mask becomes disruptive and it impacts the teacher and takes time away from teaching as she is being forced to keep masks on our face, on the face of our littles. So my question to the board members and Mr. Charo, has Midland Public Schools paid to have any studies done to show if these masks are even helping our children or harming them? And if not, why? And why, Mr. Charo, do you feel entitled to make medical decisions about my children? You are not their father, and I will not allow you any longer to negatively impact my children. Through all of this, I'm still trying to figure out what excellent things you have implemented other than violating parents' rights and children's rights to garner a $6,000 pay increase. Let me say that none of you sitting up there are medical professionals. You took guidance from Fred Janowski, our local Health Department official, who is not legally able to mandate masks for children under the age of 18. So essentially, you board members and Mr. Charo are being used to circumvent a bill that was written into law. Do you think that is a good example to set for our county's youth? If you are willing to be used by other local professionals to meet your, their agenda, then you have zero problem having, should have zero problem having a school board vote about these mandates instead of universally passing the buck. According to the school board's philosophy, the board has dual responsibility for implementing statutory requirements pertaining to public education and for meeting the desires of residents. We have been told we are the minority, but as you see here today and most other meetings, that is not the case. You are an elected official, and it seems you are breaching your own rules and regulations by ignoring the desires of your representatives.
Next up is Kristy Murray. Hi, Ms. Murray, thank you for joining us tonight.
My name is Kristy Murray. I'm a mother of two in the Midland Public School systems. I wanted to start off by listing my professional and educational credentials in order to persuade you, but I had realized that I only have one qualification that you need to know of. I'm Amin and Owen's mom. I'm an expert in this area. No one else in this room knows what's best for my two boys better than me, and your decision to mask our kids has impacted us negatively and steps on my expertise. I respect that you think you're doing what's best, but you're working outside your capability to make decisions, and they have negative consequences on my children. How does the masking policy meet the inclusion that you preach of in your school? You are only catering to the fear of some, which has an impact on others. Unless you're an expert at being Amin and Owen's mom, you can't make the decision on what's best for them. Let the parents take this matter out of your hands and give the decision to those who are qualified to decide what's best for the children, the parents. I guarantee that I have my kids' best interests in mind, their health and safety in mind, better than anyone else in this room. The heart of the matter is masking is a decision that belongs in the hands of the parents, and if you're going to make a unilateral decision as a board, the public is owed transparency, and we need to see a vote on these matters. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Ms. Megan Ferrison? Ferrison?
Ferrison.
Ferrison. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you for having me. Good evening. My name is Megan Ferrison. I'm a former MPS teacher and a current MPS parent. When my husband and I were living out of state and wanted to move back to Michigan, we asked each other this one question. If we could live anywhere in Michigan, where would it be? The answer for both of us was Midland, not only because our family would be closer to us, but because of the richness of this community. Midland valued safety in education, sciences, and the arts. It was a forward-thinking community dedicated to the success and well-being of its members. Its schools and businesses were leaders in the state and nation. I have become increasingly concerned about an emerging pattern within our school system. It seems the loudest and angriest voices are getting their way while the rest of the community watches, feeling helpless. I struggle to understand the decisions that have been made, not because they are backed by science, research, and critical thinking, but as an unfortunate result of aggressive pressure from disgruntled parents and community members. Now, I will say that having listened to what you've said so far tonight, and this isn't even about masking, I am listening to you as well, because that's our job as teachers to listen. So I've been trying to be very open-minded about everything that I'm hearing tonight. So this is not about masking, okay? So thank you. Thank you. All right, so back to this. Most recently, these tactics resulted in the removal of questions from the attitudes and behaviors survey administered by Midland Kids First and the Legacy Center, questions surrounding sex and sexual identity. Parents had a personal choice to opt their kids out of the survey, and yet some could not be assuaged until the questions were removed entirely. Now there will be a gaping hole where this data should have been, and our community will be absent of critical information needed to help determine support for young people and their families. These voices robbed the community of resources, and for what reason? Avoiding discussion of difficult topics, especially in the research context of a public health survey, does nothing to protect our young people, those at risk and otherwise. It's the stigmatization and lack of discussion surrounding complex issues that open the door wide to risky behaviors and abuse. My first transgender student was an MPS student, and I had several more in the two years I taught in this district. They were my leaders, they babysat my children, and I am a better teacher and person for having known them, because I began to understand that the struggle students face when they have to hide themselves from the world and when they feel they have something to be ashamed of. I also saw the incredible things that could happen when they were in a room where they felt seen and valued. When people feel safe, loved, heard, valued, that's when they become the best versions of themselves. A decision to stand firm on administering the survey in its original form would have been a powerful demonstration of MPS' larger commitment to inclusion, equity, and diversity, but that didn't happen. What will we do when faced with greater challenges? I'm not here to be an angry parent, but a partner in building a community of people that puts others before themselves.
Thank you, Ms. Ferrison. Ms. Amy DeHaven. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thanks for having me. Good evening. My name is Amy DeHaven. I am a lifetime resident of Midland, born and raised here and currently raising a family of my own. I have two children, a daughter at Northeast Middle School and a son at Plymouth Elementary. I have a deep passion for my community, and I've always had a great deal of respect for our schools. I was a graduate of Midland High School in 97, and I was also a cheerleading coach at high school level while I was at Northwood University. And in addition to that, my father was a teacher for Midland Public Schools for 30-plus years. I'm not here tonight to drill you on the mask mandate. I'm not happy about it, but I also have some other things I wanted to bring up to your attention tonight. As much as I'm excited to send my daughter to Midland High next year and my son to Northeast Middle School, I'm also wrestling with it at the same time, as it's quite obvious, the agendas that are being pushed, not only at the local level, but also at the highest levels. About a month ago, I was informed that both my son, fifth grader, and my daughter, who's an eighth grader, were given a survey asking what they identify with. The options were male, female, transgender, and non-binary. I reached out to Mr. Charo, and his immediate response was some of our students and their families identify with these labels, so MPS will allow families to identify themselves as they wish and not allow others to choose identifications for them. I wrote him back asking, I'd really be interested to see the stats on the numbers of families we're referencing here in our community. Please provide, are we talking 1%, 5%, 25%, 50%? Unfortunately, I never got a response, so I thought tonight I'd come here and ask you again. What sort of percentages are we dealing with here that you feel it's appropriate to ask my 11-year-old son if he's transgender? How in the world are we really here right now? It is not the school's job to ask our young children these questions. As far as my kids know, my son is a male and my daughter is a female. That is what we've always taught them, as we believe we were created by God, and God doesn't make mistakes. If Midland Public Schools is okay with asking my young children if they are female, male, trans, or non-binary, then I only feel it's appropriate to ask you a few questions. Do you believe in Jesus Christ, our Creator? If you do, then you must believe that he created man and woman. Genesis 1:27 tells us, God created human beings in his own image. In the image of God, he created them, male and female. He created them. If you believe this to be true, then you must start standing up for the truth and stop letting the world tell you lies. If you are a believer, you have a responsibility to do what is right and just, stand up for your faith and not conform to the evil in this world. We must not follow the crowd in doing wrong. Every single one of you sitting on the board tonight are leaders of this flock, a flock of hundreds of teachers and students who are now being led to question God's truth from man-made lies. It really makes me wonder how many fifth graders tonight are questioning whether or not they're a boy or a girl.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Okay, I'm going to need help with this last name. Heather A.B.I.T. or an L.E.S.? I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time reading it. Ma'am, how do I pronounce your last name?
Aviles.
Okay. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Hi, my name is Heather Aviles. I'm here representing the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee at Midland High School to share some serious concerns. The Legacy Center survey has been administered since 2005. It has provided and continues to provide a vital link between Midland Public Schools and the community, as it plays a role in allocating resources to all students, thereby supporting their social and emotional well-being of the student body. This link has no doubt contributed to Midland being rated as one of the top 100 communities in the nation. That being said, it has come to our attention that the survey has been altered. Although it is not totally clear why the survey was edited, it seems that a few individuals have succeeded in applying pressure to remove questions pertaining to gender identity and sexual behaviors. We are deeply concerned that by modifying the data collection, resources will no longer be allocated to all students, as the survey is no longer an accurate depiction of the needs of all the students at Midland Public Schools. The action of deleting questions not only robs students of much-needed resources, but also invalidates them as human beings. This goes directly against the MPS proclamation that states that diversity is a strength and that MPS is committed to creating a system that honors and elevates all. By altering the survey, we are not honoring and elevating all. Contrarily, we would be erasing the presence of marginalized communities and leaving them unseen. MPS will not, will only be a safe place for all students by taking a stand and sticking to it. This stand begins with utilizing data from the unedited Legacy Survey. We must not retreat from equity and inclusion. Because of a few loud bias individuals, the students are truly the ones to lose. Marginalized students are in jeopardy of losing resources that promote their social and emotional well-being. All students are in jeopardy of losing the opportunity to see authentic diversity, as well as the opportunity to learn how to hold multiple viewpoints. Giving into the bias of a few is a heavy loss for all.
Renita Bonetti. Did I say that right?
Bonetti.
Bonetti. Thank you for joining us.
This is my fourth meeting that I've attended, and I've watched the progression of attendance by the parents and community. First, I'd like to acknowledge the fact that according to your own bylaws in code PO 0167.3, it states that each statement made by a participant shall be limited to five minutes duration. Anything less is a violation of your bylaws. So limiting us to three minutes is a violation of the bylaws that exist. It seems that the board hides behind an unwritten rule that they're allowed to refuse to interact with the public during these meetings. Can you please point out to me in your bylaws or in the Open Meeting Act that tells you specifically that you have that right to not interact with us during these meetings? Also, per your bylaws, responsibilities of the superintendent, section 1000, code PO 1230, letter K, states, work cooperatively with parents and community groups concerned with programs in the schools. I've heard at prior meetings and seen multiple Facebook messages about requesting special meetings and for the mask mandate to be put on the agenda, yet it does not happen. Is the board not to hold him accountable to doing his job? Ignoring a request should not be an option. The people are the bosses here, not the school board or the superintendent. Our taxes pay for everything you oversee and your salaries, and the children certainly do not belong to you. As far as mask mandates, which you are, you act as though you have no choice in, I attended a meeting in our township on Wednesday. The commissioner stated that the school boards are responsible to make the decisions about the mask mandates, not the Health Department, as they have no such mandate to enforce. It seems the board is using the Health Department to abuse the children with these mask mandates. There is nothing in the bylaws that gives this superintendent or the board the right to put out any medical mandate for the children, the staff. to put out any medical mandate for the children, the staff, or bus drivers. You can suggest it, but you cannot mandate it. You owe it to the parents and the people of this community to give them a voice and a chance to interact with you. The board members and the superintendent, you need open dialogue, or this will only get worse. It really is your choice. Stand up or resign, and let those willing to make these difficult decisions and discussions with the parents and community take your place. The board is no place to be a coward. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, folks, I'm having a hard time reading. Joseph-
Same last name.
Okay. I apologize, sir. Welcome, and thank you.
Thank you. Joseph Bonetti. Slightly different topic, but related to the cooperation of the whole. On September 29th, the National School Board Association wrote a six-page letter to the Attorney General of the United States, basically saying that the public is a domestic terrorist organization and needs to be brought under control by, let's see, the FBI, the Post Office, the Secret Service, the Homeland Security, and is a national threat, as well as invoking the Counterterrorism Division to bring, to come back. That was on a Wednesday. Two business days later, Monday morning, the Attorney General then says that everybody across the country needs to cooperate with the FBI to interact with federal, state, local, tribal, et cetera, and set up meetings to interact on this topic so that the patriots, I would call them, are brought under control. Obviously, the National School Board Association went a little far, and then got caught with their hand in the cookie jar, and they issued a full retraction on October 22nd where they regret that they did that. And even they then said, "We deeply value not only the work of our local school board that makes important contributions, but also the voices of parents who should and must be concerned, be heard when it comes to discussions about their children." In the midst of that Attorney General communication, he wants everybody to talk to all the sheriffs, et cetera. I will call the sheriff and say, "If he gets contacted on this, he need not cooperate, and it is ridiculous." I would like a reaction from you guys that says, "We rebuke the concept of these folks, and even these folks being domestic terrorists." The concept of segregation also detests me. The entire state of Pennsylvania has left the National School Board Association over this issue. Michigan hasn't, of course, done that, but you can drop yourself out of the Michigan School Board Association if they refuse to take a position on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Becky Root. Ms. Root? Good evening, and thank you for joining us.
Tonight, I am here to tell you the story of my family. We have three children in the district, two attend Plymouth, and their story is the story I'm going to tell. On October 6th, I was diagnosed with COVID. On October 7th, I called the school and reported to the school. The following was my experience. The teacher of my first-grade student prepared work, put it in the office, and instructed me to come to the school and pick it up. Yes, you heard me correct. Come to the school and pick it up. She said, "Call the school when you arrive, and they will bring it to your car." The point of quarantine is to stay home, not exposing anyone else, especially not the very school I'm keeping my children home from. The teacher of my second grader prepared the work, gathered the things my son had left in the classroom the day before I became ill, and brought them to our home. She left them on the porch and chatted with my son through the sliding glass door six feet from our house. Let me provide you insight on my son Chandler, the second grader mentioned above. Chandler has sensory processing disorder and ADHD. He has an IEP and a medical mask waiver, because the mask heightens his senses and makes it very hard for him to focus. This waiver was signed by an MD specifically for the school setting. Upon the end of my quarantine, I learned I would have to submit to serial testing or keep the children home another 10 days. With Chandler receiving services from school, I opted for serial testing and a return to school. This is where the problems began. The serial testing program stripped my son of his medical waiver. Mr. Sharo, board, do any of you possess a doctorate of medicine degree? Do you have the education to override the healthcare provider of my child? If a child has a negative COVID test in the serial testing program and a medical mask waiver on file, they should not be stripped of their medical rights. On the third day of the serial testing, I received a phone call from the office. My son was sent to the office. He could not understand why suddenly, this far into the school year, a teacher was making him wear a mask. He wouldn't keep the mask on. So now, a violation of his medical rights has turned into a behavior problem. How do you deem this the best interest of a child? How do you in good conscience feel a child's medical rights should stop interrupting their education and creating behavior problems? I'm not against masks, and I'm not against vaccines. I'm for parents' choice. Please vote publicly on this.
Thank you, Ms. Root. Next is Mr. Craig Miller. Good evening, Mr. Miller. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. I wasn't gonna take the full three minutes, but I'm gonna read the rest of Jimmy's speech. But first, I want to ask each one of you guys, I know the only person that's really contacted or corresponded with me is Mr. Sharo. He's taken a lot of heat for not doing so, he has with me, so thank you. I want to know what each one of you guys think about, do you want kids being masked or not? We want to know how to vote. We want to know how to vote next November. So if you could, email or send it to our group, which one of you guys want masks, which one of you don't? Now for Jimmy's speech. This comes from Dr. McDonald. He's a psychiatrist. "I had a mother and her eight-year-old who came into my practice, both wearing masks, and I assured them it was okay to take it off, and it was safe. And the mother took, to her credit, took hers off. The boy left on, and then I asked, 'Why aren't you taking yours off?'" He looked up at me and said, "'There are Delta variants everywhere, and I might die.'" He looked at his mom and thought he might kill his own mother, end quote. This encapsulates how the children are feeling, and how children have been more importantly harmed and shamed. Children K through 12 are like clay, and younger they are, the easier they are to mold and implant behaviors on. This one's directed at you, Mr. Sharo. Mr. Sharo, are you aware of the racial scale that was handed out to your high school students just two weeks ago in a classroom, asking these young minds to judge how racist a person was by a book they wrote in Emily Hockemeyer's English class? The board claims to denounce critical race theory, but here we are. Mr. Sharo, this is a type of school that you run and allow, and you wonder why people are leaving for private schools in droves, unless you are failing students. I'd like to know, how many classrooms do you sit in a month? How many teachers do you meet to see? And how are they doing? How are you helping new teachers with my child? And it can be a very challenging year for teachers. My point is to stop wasting time on pointless matters like mask and shot focus on the job, or the shot and focus on the job you were brought here for learning and teaching young minds of tomorrow. I think I'm running out of time, so I'm gonna go to my favorite part here. There's three of you guys, which I know is Roush, Blatterback, and then the vacant Frazee, that are up for election. I will be replacing one of you real soon, and I can assure you that I have the support of all the Rise Up Midland. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Mr. Daniel Segura. Did I say that right? S.E. Okay. Good evening, sir. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. It's also Daniel Segura, if you prefer. Educating our youth is a weighty task. I applaud you all, Midland Public School educators, as many of the educated, many of the speakers here have demonstrated critical thinking skills and are too many severely lacking in the ability to discern actual facts and valid information from credible resources. Instead, many folks are depending on Google searches over real information. It can't be denied that some facts are uncomfortable, but as educators, is it our task to help everyone be comfortable? Or is it our job to discuss facts and truths with children in our schools? As well, might they discuss why they're uncomfortable? As a matter of educational policy, MPS does not teach critical race theory. Okay. There are likely lots of good reasons for the curriculum resources we choose in the classroom, and probably several bad ones. Either way, we can still teach about the influence that the belief in white supremacy has had on the foundation, growth, and the very existence of this nation, and in the lives we live every day. The fact is that we live on land that was stolen from its indigenous inhabitants. Even while we blithely paddle our kayaks down the Tidawassee River towards Saginaw and the state of Michigan, we send our kids to schools that fail to even mention why those names are part of our lives. We still teach kids on Columbus Day that he discovered America, and that pilgrims were great friends with the Wampanoag natives, before they started genocide. No curriculum in the USA or this district teaches about the thefts, massacre, and race assault of thousands of Americans on Black Wall Street in Tulsa, Oklahoma. The illegal concentration of and theft of Japanese citizens during the Civil War, or the Second World War, sorry, are barely mentioned. And the treason and real racist reasons behind the foundation for the Confederacy are glossed over. When do we mention who built the White House? When do we embrace real facts so our kids can know real truths? Our district serves students with background from every race, ethnicity, religion, sexual orientation, true story, and gender identity. If we can't get past narratives that keep the belief in white Christian supremacy as the primary force for existence and success of this nation, how can we expect our children to rise above that? As public educators, we are constitutionally bound to operate on facts, supported by research, by not by antiquated or magical religious beliefs that exclude our children. Is diversity and inclusion actually a strength you believe in for the stakeholders of the Midland Public Schools? And as a parent of a gender non-binary student, I thank you for your efforts.
Good evening. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Okay. I am a mother of two kids in Midland Public Schools. I have a high schooler and a middle schooler. And based on what my observations have been and theirs is that I can pretty assuredly say that the majority of students, teachers, and parents do not seem to support mask mandates. The reason I say this, my high school student, who is a very advanced math student, estimates that approximately less than 5% of children in her high school right now are voluntarily wearing masks, and only one out of seven of her teachers currently wear masks. My sixth grader, however, says that before the mandate, he's guessing maybe 10% of students were voluntarily wearing masks, and two out of eight of his teachers wore them prior to the mandate. Parents really deserve to know how each of the board members would vote on a mask mandate. It's our right as parents to know that the people that we're electing are supporting our views or not, that we're giving our votes to. But I do have to say, and something I think that both sides of the mask mandate can probably agree on, is that I believe that the middle school mask policy is asinine. Masking the vulnerable sixth graders while leaving the rest of the school unmasked is just silly. Proponents of mask-wearing say that masks protect others. If so, shouldn't really the sixth graders who cannot be vaccinated be protected by having the rest wear masks? But I do have to say, I do believe there are, I'm guessing, I think there's two, maybe two board members here that have children that are in the cutoff, seventh, eighth graders, maybe, that benefit from this. So good for you. However, I'm in a situation where I have a sixth grader who is 12. So he falls within the range of vaccination age. However, he's being discriminated against because he's only in the sixth grade. He's a 12-year-old in the sixth grade, cannot be vaccinated, or can be vaccinated, but has to wear a mask, excuse me. With the mask-wearing, he suffers from facial lesions, which his doctor has called affectionately "macne." So his macne, he's not quite of puberty, so his macne is isolated to the region of his mask. He's very athletic, and he's very energetic, he sweats a lot. So these lesions cause problems and sores in his face, which he shouldn't have to deal with, so I gave him the option of homeschooling. He said, "No, at this time, he wants to stay in school." So he's willing to suffer through the macne and through some canker sores and other mouth lesions in order to stay in school. So I've given him that choice up for now. But I do have to say, I don't believe that mask-wearing in schools reduces COVID's spread. I think that there's a lot of data. We can't just look, you know, at isolated, you know, Midland County, or Detroit, or even Michigan as a whole. When you look nationally with masks, I think that the data show that it's just, it doesn't mitigate the spread of COVID. And definitely masking for, oh, man, I haven't gotten through half of what I need. So the last thing I'm gonna say is, three minutes, not enough. Thank you.
Good evening, sir. Thank you for joining us. Please allow me to speak. All right. Regarding the mask mandate, who is in control? I know the board and the people before us are good people. However, I fear the MPS mask policy has become a mechanism, a troubling precedent for authoritative bureaucratic control, and this is how. Number one, in October 2020, the school board unanimously adopted a policy that places the burden of mandate activation on the superintendent. Two, the superintendent then wields unilateral authority to implement the mask mandate. Three, any number of authorities can influence the superintendent, including the county Health Department, or any proxy of bureaucratic control. In the end, with the current mask policy, we have no way of knowing who is pulling the strings now, or more importantly, in the future. And this is a bipartisan issue. Those in support of the mask mandate will rightfully object when the mask mandate is rescinded for the exact same, with the exact same lack of transparency with which it was activated. We all need transparency. So I have two requests. Number one, please add a vote to next meeting's agenda to rescind the current mask policy. This will implicitly place the power to enforce the mask mandate back where it belongs, with you all. Two, please add a vote to next meeting's agenda to keep or cancel the mask mandate. Regardless of where the vote falls, the vote outcome will please some and displease others, but at least will have transparency. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Sutter. Thank you for joining us.
My name is William Sutter. First meeting I've ever come to. I moved here from Bay City. I left that horrific liberal town to come to a better city where money went where it was supposed to go, and people listened. Plain and simple. Saginaw's the same way, Flint's the same way, Detroit's the same way. They don't listen to their constituents, and you guys are slowly falling into that category. You need to start listening, period. It's sad that I moved here to get away from it, and I'm falling right back into it. Secondly, Pandora's Box is what I was thinking here. How many of you here- How many of you here think that COVID is going anywhere? It's not. This is part of humanity for the rest of our humanity. As long as humans are on this earth, it is going to be with us. We're never getting rid of it. Ever. And you can thank those wonderful scientists that played God. You guys are making masks. It should be voluntary. It should be choice. You guys need to vote on it. This is getting ridiculous. You sit there, you're supposed to be, these are your constituents, that side, this side, it don't matter if you're Democrat, Republican, Liberal, it don't matter. We are all asking you to vote. Do your job, or we can find people to replace you next time you come up for vote. That's the end of it.
Next, we have Ms. Sarah Liedwin. Sarah? Sorry. Thank you. Thank you. Welcome back.
Hi. All right. I'm back again. I don't, I lost track. I don't know. Maybe meeting number nine or something. But since we're down to three minutes, I'm going to try to go fast. There's a lot of what I want to speak to that has already been spoken of, but I want to clarify just a little more. Basically, what I want to talk about tonight is our relationship. What we have here, we are your constituents. You are our board. We are parents, right? You're the school board. We've elected you. We have this relationship. We're supposed to work together. We're here talking month after month, telling you our concerns, the things that are bothering us and our children. Mr. Sherrill mentioned at the last board meeting that around 30% of superintendents and a similar number of school board members have resigned in the last year. As was mentioned by a prior speaker, the National School Board Association wrote a letter recently calling, saying that parents could be the equivalent form of domestic terrorism and hate crimes. So, yes, they've apologized, but still, they made it very clear that they don't think parents should be here talking. They don't want to hear from us. It's no wonder that we all feel stressed and frustrated. I know that after a significant number of months standing here and talking to you, I do not feel respected and I do not feel listened to. At the last school board meeting, Mr. Blasey asked in the open conversation at the end how you all could better respond to us and our concerns, and I thank you for asking that question. Mr. Lotterbach did a great job of explaining why this is not the proper forum. Totally respect that as well, and Mr. Sherrill backed him up on that. But he also, Mr. Sherrill also came out with a comment that said, it's up to all of you to dialogue with us outside of this room, so that you have already taken our opinions into account when you come here and work together and make your decisions. Unfortunately, Mr. Sherrill, a few comments later on said that public opinion is not how you guys should base your decisions. So, that seemed a little contradictory for me. So, I pulled up the bylaws. There are two sections that I think are fairly important for you all to listen to again. One is a section labeled "relation with parents." In there, it says, "The Board of Education believes that the education of children is a joint responsibility, one it shares with the parents of the school community. To ensure the best interests of the child are served in this process, a strong program of communication between home and school must be maintained." Under section "Philosophy of the Board," it says, "The Board has the dual responsibility for implementing statutory requirements pertaining to public education and for meeting the desire of the residents." It also states, "The Board has an obligation to determine and assess citizen desires." Further, it says, "The Board declares and thereby reforms its intent to maintain a two-way communication with citizens in the district." So, somehow, you all need to come up with a better way of meeting with us, dialoguing with us, question-and-answer session outside of this room.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt Buchek.
See, I got it right this time.
You did. Wow. Thank you. My wife and I appreciate that. So, thank you for your time. My name is Matt Buchek. I'm an American citizen and resident of Midland. I have three children in the MPS system, and I am against mask mandates or any mandate imposed on our children by this school board. I would like everyone to know that myself and the group I represent would not be here if we didn't care and love our children. To those who are for mask mandates, we care for your children too, just not in a creepy Joe Biden kind of way. We don't want anybody to be harmed. In fact, we ask you to join us if you would. Some of you may be uncomfortable with the school imposing masks on your children, but still agree that they are necessary. We're okay with that. Some of you may be alarmed at groups in your message boards from parents who are excited to learn new methods to condition their children to wear masks long-term. We're concerned as well. We also want you to have the choice whether or not your child is vaccinated against COVID. We know this is a real disease. We have a few of us who were and are pretty sick from it as I speak. The sickest was hospitalized while also being twice vaccinated against it, but I digress. I do believe most of this face mask malarkey came from a recommendation over the summer from the American Academy of Pediatrics, the AAP. Dr. Hamilton talked about this last month. They recommended that children two years and up wear face masks unless a medical condition prohibits it. The AAP was sold to us as a completely non-political, unbiased organization of 67,000 pediatricians. However, the AAP website, as of September this year, was riddled with government propaganda, including a section titled "Climate Change, Clean Air, and Environmental Justice," pictures of physicians at anti-gun protests, and incredibly, how the AAP is building back better, whatever the hell that means. They also recently deleted entire sections of their website on early childhood development and the importance of facial cues for learning, including the FaceTime and Emotional Health poster you may see at some pediatrician offices. This is the organization that the group of physicians from last month's meeting held in highest regard. I understand better than most that physicians are humans too, but what was with that group that came in last month? I know they were there to pleasure the board, but most important thing that we need to know is what to do when our children gets diagnosed with COVID-19. How do we care for them and get them back to school? Instead, we heard that the Delta variant is more deadly to kids than the original strain. Funny enough, the AAP also has a news and publication website. I went there in September, only a few days before the last board meeting, to see the filing article published on the main page. "Delta variant causing increase in pediatric COVID-19 cases, not severity." Do any of you know the number of people under the age of 50 in Midland County who have died from COVID-19? The answer is zero to five people under 50 years of age. It's zero to five because the state doesn't break down the demographics if the number's below five. The most deadliest disease causing us to quarantine our lives and harm our children with face masks, zero to five under 50 years. And I know saving one death would be totally worth it, which is why I was originally afraid to share this statistic because of the threats we've had thrown at us and our children, hoping death on them because we don't support mandates. Zero to five deaths under the age of 15.
Rob Johnston.
Why do you walk up there?
Good evening, sir, and welcome back. Appreciate that. Thanks for the time to speak. Thanks, everybody. All right. So, during the last board meeting, I talked about the ineffectiveness of cloth masks. I made references to the harm that they could cause, and I did use Google and other search engines to come up with the studies through CDC, Berkeley, NIH. There was 40 peer-reviewed studies that I gave you all, right? I gave you, and you had plenty of time to review them. That was Google. Sorry, I didn't mean to. Yeah. What did, what did you? Excuse me, I got a little tripped up there. I went on to talk about things that would actually effectively kill COVID in its tracks and would also have the side effect of giving our kids fresher, cleaner air to breathe. What did you do with that information? There have been zero communication around the mask date, around the mask mandate and what measures you would be using to get rid of the mandate. Is the school district being given some COVID funds based on levels of COVID measures that we have in place? Last time around, I also talked a little bit about the rate of teen suicide in the last year. That number continues to climb. A new study out shows that suicide among girls 12 to 17 was 50.6% higher compared to the same period in 2019. That is devastating, and every bit of that has been attributed to the unintended outcomes of COVID measures. How unfortunate is that? Just, COVID measures, just like the ones you have in place currently. It would seem the road to hell truly is paved with good intentions. But all things being fair, initially, we didn't have this data. But now that we do, what, what are we going to do about it? What are you going to do about it? What changes now that we know that these things are physically hurting children, causing them to take themselves out because of things that were mentioned previously? They're afraid that they're going to kill grandma. They're afraid of their peers. They're afraid. How, how can you live with doing that to children? I don't understand it. Especially considering that in our area, there have quite literally been zero deaths of anyone 20 and under. Zero. Sorry. That has to sink in, right? I mean, zero. And we're choosing to mask the least affected people in our community. The very least. The high school kids that go play football, they go play track, whatever they got to do, but are the least affected are being masked. Oh, yeah. I was going to use my remaining time, which is not much, to go over some statistics. Real quick, there have been 1.6 million entries into the VAERS database for negative effects. 818,000 of those were from last year. 17,128 deaths. I printed out a chart to show you from 1990 until present what that looks like on a chart. This is 1990. This is now. The only thing that changed was COVID. This is the only vaccine that changed. I don't know if you guys can see that. That's devastating. How can we call this safe and effective? Ms. Mandy Cox. Good evening. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Hello again. I just wanted to get up here and ask you all a question. If there really was a state of emergency in our schools, like our Midland County Health Department Director has reported as of Friday, right before this Monday night school board meeting, why isn't there a county-wide emergency order? If there is such a state of emergency, why are we not requiring everyone, adults included, to be masked at their places of employment or out in the community? Why are we not requiring adults to be tested routinely, like we are on our least vulnerable population? Why are these requirements only being implemented on the least vulnerable? Our children? I definitely have my suspicions on that. I spoke about it last month. All of this testing is creating more false positives and close contacts for more testing to be implemented and the numbers to be going higher and higher. These testing and quarantining factors need to stop. It is harmful, and it is a violation of our children's constitutional rights. According to Michigan Revised School Code 380.10, under the Rights of Parents and Legal Guardians duties of public schools, it states, "It is the natural, fundamental right of parents and legal guardians to determine and direct the care, teaching, and education of their children." To me, I would say that that right there answers this question. It is a parent's decision. I know this is awkward. It's horrible for everybody, and you guys shouldn't have this pressure to make these decisions either. I really feel for you in the situation that you're in as our elected officials, but it really can't be that simple to give the decision back to the parents. Why not allow parents the option to sign a form saying the school will not be held liable if they contract COVID if we send our kids unmasked, so that liability and threat is taken off of the schools? Did you know that in the state of Michigan this year, in 2021, according to the vital statistics of Michigan.gov, there have only been four deaths this year in children due to COVID, influenza, and pneumonia? While all of them tragic, only four in our state. That is a fatality rate nationwide of 0.0007%, according to the CDC. Yet, here we are treating them like they are the most susceptible population with all of these extra extreme measures, which we all know is not true. They are not the ones at risk. If these requirements aren't being implemented on the most vulnerable in our society, the elderly and those with comorbidities during a state of emergency, they surely shouldn't be happening on our children who are the least at risk. Any of you on the board that feel the same need to step up and speak out? We will hold you accountable. We need to see a vote on the record. No more hiding and pointing fingers and statements of our hands are tied. We are not buying it.
Shane Bennett. Mr. Bennett. Good evening. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Wanted to finish up on some thoughts that I had from last month's meeting. First, I guess I'd like to point out, I'm not seeing any masks in front of me right now, and I'd like to point out that's against what all the doctors told us last, during the last meeting, so I just wanted that on the record here. At best, the science behind masking children is uncertain. The CDC's own studies confirm this. Second, all masks are not created equal, yet we are told the consequences of COVID spread are extremely dangerous, but apparently at school, any mask will do. Masks indeed have side effects and medical downside. The CDC and the AAP are global outliers in terms of masking children under the age of 12. What do we know about child masking that apparently Europe doesn't? FYI, the AAP recommends forcibly masking two-year-olds. To justify this, the CDC references AAP guidance. The AAP references CDC guidance. The MCDPH references both the guidance, none of which reference any randomized controlled testing data on masking, just appeals to credentials. The numbers still tell us that COVID is an extremely small risk to children, despite what we were told by the doctors at the last meeting, even with Delta variant. Lastly, what are the metrics to move away from masking? We see no off-ramp. The CDC uses case rates per 100,000, but it's increasingly clear that even a fully vaccinated population can spread the virus. If benign instances of transmission among healthy populations are treated as emergencies, then the crisis will never be over, and the mask will never come off. Let's look at the countries of Israel and Singapore. Look at college campuses. Many still requiring masks and distancing at nearly 100% vaccination rates. The CDC's own Dr. Rochelle Walensky, on her recent TV appearance, said, and I quote, "So, right now, we're going to continue to recommend masks in all schools, all people in those schools, in response to mass recommendations being linked to the availability of children's vaccines." So, those were the facts, and this is my opinion. I'm sorry, but when I see this evidence, it makes me think that mask mandate is all theater, meant to placate a vocal subset and give the illusion of control for the uncontrollable. We are normalizing masking to address what is at this point a seasonal flu-level threat after vaccinations became widely available. The latest data shows more than 80% of the US population now has some form of immunity, natural or otherwise. Furthermore, it is not my child's responsibility to interrupt her childhood to protect adults. It is not her responsibility to soothe your safety-induced neuroses or relieve anxieties of the work-from-home class that desire everyone adopt a zero-risk approach in pursuit of an unachievable zero-COVID goal. It is not her job to cover for public health experts on scientific measures that failed to stop the spread of the virus. She is a child. We are adults. No other time in history have we asked children to sacrifice for the benefit of adults, and I question the ethics of people who spend their entire lives enjoying normalcy and now believe that children should sacrifice their most joyful years to protect adults. Their defining milestones are delayed or outright canceled by adults who already experienced them. It's time to admit we overreacted and continue to do so. It's time to admit real public health is about much more than a single endemic respiratory virus. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I'm assuming this is Dan Ferrison, since Meghan addressed this earlier? This is Meghan and Dan Ferrison? Or is that inaccurate?
I was prepared to speak. I thought I was signing in.
Okay.
I mean, I can go off the cuff.
If, if you want to say something, sir, now's your, now's your chance.
Certainly. I had a chance last year, I'm a choir director here in the district, Dan Ferrison. Hi, it's nice to see you. Hi, thanks. I had a chance last year to share with Mr. Sherrill. I didn't send it to the whole board because that wasn't my place at the time, some really powerful studies, including video of the studies of the effectiveness of three-layer masks, exactly like the blue one I'm holding today. They stop the spread of aerosol, and I applaud you in following that science. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Paige DeHaven.
to her waist and wearing a cat ears with little bells that jingled everywhere she went. I was also walking down the hallway three weeks ago when a boy wearing dog ears barked at me and my friend as we passed. This same boy who was walking out of the building on all four legs as we walked outside to go watch a science project. I don't understand why kids are acting so unhuman and not happy with themselves. These things just make me feel uncomfortable and so unnecessary as to why they're barking at me, and it's very distracting during school days. Thank you.
Thank you. Wendy Brand. Good evening, thank you for joining us.
All right, Jesus help me. Board members, excuse me, a great many lives are at stake, and not for the reasons that you are spouting or claiming. In fact, the opposite is true and verifiable by many published studies. The fact that we are concerned about our safety because we stand up here and speak out should speak volumes about what's really happening here. It's evil. And it doesn't make, and if it doesn't make one take notice, then they are willfully blind and ignorant, and ignorance is not bliss. We are here to vindicate for righteousness for the future leaders of our community, these precious and innocent children. Absolute power corrupts absolutely. The good news is, is that you don't have absolute power. You take your instructions from we, the people, and we have the power. I think that there are a few people in the audience who would agree with that. Am I right, patriots? Parents, you are the change. You have the power. You pay the taxes and you decide what they're to be used for. You decide what will be taught to your children. You voted these people in, and if they continue to fail you and your children as miserably as they have been, they have been doing for nearly two years, then you can recall them or replace them. You can do that. So take back your power and save your children. You and your child's civil rights are not debatable, neither are your parental rights. Just because a group of elected community members who have been left to their own devices for far too long believe they can make better decisions for all children doesn't make it true. This is a turning point. You can either watch history being made, or you can make it yourself. You are the author of the immediate future. Parents and concerned community members, change can only come from you. We must be cautious with letting other people represent us or expecting them to do the right things without holding them accountable. We've obviously made a mistake by trusting them to do so, as well as putting responsibility for our children in their hands because we were too busy to notice what was happening. With convenience comes great consequences. These people who claim to be for the children will continue creating chaos as long as you allow them to. So step up. Step up. Step up. Board members, how much must you have received, or how much is enough for you to continue doing what you're doing and destroying our great country, county by county, and giving up our freedoms, as well as your family's freedoms in the future, the very near future if things continue, from here on out? We have the facts, you've seen them, and you know they're the truth. So whatever you've sold your soul for, I ask you, was it worth it to pay the price for the eternal punishment you will quite possibly receive? God is just, and His wrath is coming to those who dare to challenge Him. We're praying for each of you and your families. God protect these children from evil, in the name of Jesus. It's time for a town hall meeting, friends.
Lisa Hansen. Good evening, welcome back.
Good evening, good evening. This shirt is absurd, right? I wore it on purpose because seven months now, I've been coming to this board meeting, and I think absurd is just kind of a good word for where we're at these days. I mean, I respect everyone's right to choose what is best for them, and it is sad that we are being divided the way we're being divided. But it could be handled so easily if you would just give parents choice. It really is that simple. And I'm sorry, I really am sorry that it has come to this level. Who would have ever thought that we would be at this place where board members and parents would be pitted against each other in our society? It's wrong on every level. Our leaders have failed us at every single level. So I just am here, because I knew you'd miss me if I wasn't here speaking this month, but as a concerned parent, I am not a domestic terrorist, I am a concerned parent. We are all concerned, there has got to be a way to unite everyone, because we are people that live in a community together, and we are supposed to love one another, and we have so much more in common than not in common. But you got to listen to everybody's voice. You got to listen to everybody's voice, and parents have rights. And it's been really disappointing, you know, I think a big part of why, I had notes, but who needs notes? I think a big part of why we're where we are today is because we have really entrusted you with our children. We really thought, and I believe you're all good people, I want to make that known, I do believe you're good people, I believe you have great intentions, I believe you're knowledgeable, I believe you're intelligent, but this division is coming from way up above, and it has filtered down to the schools, and it's wrong, the division is wrong. So, we need to respect one another, but, you know, it's just like with a kid, when my child, you know, you give a child trust, and when they have lost trust, they have to re-earn it. And I'm sorry, but you're kind of there, because there hasn't been the transparency that we deserve, and you're not listening to us. I'm seven months, and I'm saying the same thing month after month, and nothing has changed. And I just want to say, it is so wrong to think that the only option for COVID is a vaccination for five to 11-year-olds. And I get that the FDA could approve it to go through, that's fine, but we still don't have any long-term results. We don't have any long-term results. I think it's crazy, but everybody's allowed to do their thing, this is America. But you're not listening to us. We, as parents, have the right to do it, so take that off your plate. Our kids should be getting academic education, not questioning their gender. This is ridiculous. So I'm just going to end with that, because I know y'all know where I stand, and I appreciate being able to come here and speak every month, and I just want everyone to know that I applaud for every single person that gets up here, whether I agree with you or I don't agree with you, although I agree with most of these people, but I just want you to know, I applaud because it's not easy getting up here. You have to sit through it, it's horrible, so thank you.
Katie Sterns. Good evening, thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Katie Sterns, English teacher at Midland High School. I also have a son who is a senior there. I'm just going to piggyback on an esteemed colleague and friend, Heather Avalais. I didn't really have anything like super prepared, so just a couple of things, couple of rhetorical questions regarding the Legacy Center survey, which I will be administering tomorrow as a Midland High teacher, and my son will be taking it. First question, who asked for the changes in the questions to be removed? Like, how many people asked, and who asked for those questions? And then who made the final decision? What was the rationale? Although I do believe that Superintendent Sherrill may have addressed that in his earlier remarks, but the final decision, that was one question we had in our meeting. Did the group that wanted the questions pulled understand the opt-out option, that their child did not have to take this survey? If they did understand the opt-out, do we know why they didn't see that as a sufficient option for their child? Because obviously, we want choice for our kids, and if you don't like the questions being asked, you can opt out. These decisions to pull these questions, to me, reeks the same odor as book banning and censorship. And this decision does not align with our district's approved and voted-on policy, and frankly, perpetuates the reputation that Midland Public Schools is exclusive, closed-minded, and out of touch. Thank you.
Peggy Hough. Good evening, ma'am, thank you for joining us.
Sorry, I'm taking so long. Ice frost yesterday. I'm here to address you all. I know that you are all members of the same community that I am, and I have been for the past 22 years. I want to give you a little bit of my background, just so you know I'm not a total flake. I have a degree in psychology and sociology. I have a master's degree in theological studies, for what that's worth, as my father said. My father was a schoolteacher, so I really sympathize with teachers. School boards, not so much, but you guys have your own set of tasks, and I suggest you read your rules. I'm one of those people, that's a sociologist in me, that I read rules, I read bylaws, I read nonfiction. I read up on things, I surf the net. But I want to tell you, the reason I'm here is I have four grandchildren that are in your school district. Three of them are at Adams Elementary, kindergarten first, no, kindergarten second and fifth, and I have a granddaughter in Jefferson, she's a seventh grader. I see fear in these kids. First of all, they're afraid to give grandma COVID. You know, grandma was okay with COVID. I had it. So did grandpa. I was more worried and told my granddaughter, "I don't want you bringing lice home from school again." See this hair? Okay. I want and expect things to be rational. I expect children to be taught critical thinking. I expect children to understand some of the rules that they're given. What makes no sense to me at all is these kids, my third-grade grandson, I'm sorry, second-grade grandson, cannot play with his best friend from last year in the school ground, because you have to be in your own little pods, you can't be with that class, they're in the same grade level. They can go to karate class together, they can play soccer together, they can sit together in church, they can sit next to each other in a loons game, but they can't play on a playground in a public school. This makes no sense to me whatsoever. Now, I understand that sometimes rules don't make sense, I do understand that. However, there are some issues that I have been concerned with, especially with my granddaughter in Jefferson. There's all sorts of gender issues going on, and I wonder if our pastor, who says the youth group is now being stigmatized because they're Christian, and the straights are being stigmatized.
I'm going to butcher this one, I'm sorry, everybody. Is it Ca- Cata? C-A-T-A? I can't read the last name, I'm sorry. You may be coming up. Pocatela, L-I-N-A, maybe is the last name? Is that, sorry, I apologize.
That's all right, it's Spanish.
Sorry, we can't read the letters. Good evening, welcome, thank you for joining us.
Thank you very much for the time. It's crystal clear that we are facing a highly dangerous situation. In just a few days, the FDA is poised to approve the emergency authorization of the shot for children ages five to 11. Although young children have very little risk of developing complications from the COVID virus, the powers that should not be are rushing to get shots in arms for all the children just as fast as they can. And ask yourself why. The four mid-Michigan doctors who attended the last meeting were in agreement that the shots are safe and effective. The scientific evidence does not support their statement. Scientific fact, the latest alarming numbers from the CDC, FDA's own Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System, or VAERS for short, refer to the negative health events reported after an individual receives a COVID shot. Here are the latest numbers, and ask yourself if this vaccine is safe and effective. 818,000 adverse events, 127,000 doctor visits, and this is after taking the shot, 83,000 hospitalizations, 92,000 urgent care visits, 26,000 permanently disabled people after taking the shot, 10,000 Bell's palsy victims, 10,000 myocarditis/pericarditis, which is heart inflammation, that's 10,000, 8,000 heart attacks, 2,000 miscarriages, and the big one, 17,128 deaths after taking the COVID vaccines. Now ask yourself, does that sound to you like a safe and effective vaccine, and do you want to recommend those vaccines to children five to 11 years old? I would say no. Scientific fact, these numbers might only represent about 1% of the actual adverse events, according to the CDC and FDA themselves. Scientific fact, according to VAERS, the total number of deaths linked to the shots is greater than the number of deaths associated with all other vaccines combined since the year 1990, when they began reporting. That is amazing in and of itself. The elephant in the room question, why haven't these emergency vaccines been pulled off the market, since they are correlated with a high number of deaths and adverse health events? Ask yourself why. They always have pulled them off the market in the past.
Tom O'Brien. Mr. O'Brien. Good evening, sir, welcome, thank you for joining us.
Good evening. My name is Tom O'Brien, and I'm a grandfather of three children here in Midland, two of whom are in school. And I'm concerned about two things this evening. The first is the board, you think you know how to take care of our families better than ourselves? And second, is the concern that the fact is that you guys, very much like our federal government, aren't listening to your constituents. I didn't attend last month's meeting, but was grateful to be able to watch it online, and I commend you, who stood up and spoke passionately and articulated your demands for answers and wishes to maintain your choice of putting masks on your children. And for the record, the Midland Daily News needs to correct their article from last month, because over 80% of those who did stand up stood up for choice, and that's just not a handful. In truthful reporting, that's called an overwhelming majority. I really can't say much more about the first item, because the families that spoke up did a masterful job of speaking up for themselves, and our community is grateful for such participation, courage, and leadership. The second item, whether or not you're listening, can easily be answered here tonight. I'd like to know if you have addressed any of the parental concerns that were spoken last month. Did you, or any member of your board, address Laura's concern about the masks that impact her child? What about Rob's challenge to build a filtration system that would kill the virus in the classroom? How about Mindy's question about the dangerous COVID vaccine testing protocols that are going on? What about Todd's concern about violating the Open Meetings Act? What about Will's concern about the superintendent's consistently failing to work with parents? Or Wendy's demand to stand down? What about Rebecca's question on whether or not you've done your long-term research studies on whether or not these mandates work? Or how about Jacob's question on why he was denied emergency hearing to discuss the overreach of putting medical devices on our children? What about Mark's concern about the questionable and unreliable COVID test reports that you're providing? Or Shane's request? And for the record, the Midland Daily News needs to correct their article from last month. Because over 80% of those who did stand up stood up for choice, and that's just not a handful. In truthful reporting, that's called an overwhelming majority. I really can't say much more about the first item, because the families that spoke up did a masterful job of speaking up for themselves, and our community is grateful for such participation, courage, and leadership. The second item, whether or not you're listening, can easily be answered here tonight. I'd like to know if you have addressed any of the parental concerns that were spoken last month. Did you, or any member of your board, address Laura's concern about the masks that impact her child? What about Rob's challenge to build a filtration system that would kill the virus in the classroom? How about Mindy's question about the dangerous COVID vaccine testing protocols that are going on? What about Todd's concern about violating the Open Meetings Act? What about Will's concern about the superintendent's consistently failing to work with parents? Or Wendy's demand to stand down? What about Rebecca's question on whether or not you've done your long-term research studies on whether or not these mandates work? Or how about Jacob's question on why he was denied an emergency hearing to discuss the overreach of putting medical devices on our children? What about Mark's concern about the questionable and unreliable COVID test reports that you're providing? Or Shane's request to prove that the masks have benefits that outweigh the costs? Or Lisa's reminder that you took an oath to the Constitution and not the CDC or the Health Department? What about Melissa's challenge to provide a list of mask manufacturers that would stand behind the products for use that you're intending it to use? Or Emily's demand to ensure that a husband and their family's sacrifice is not in vain? Or James' problem that you're distracted, or perhaps not even protecting our kids? Or Catalina's request to look at the CDC reports, and that indicate masks do not protect our children? Or Chris's question, what happened to common sense? Or Kurt's demand that parents need to be heard and have material impact on the decision of this board? And finally, Sarah's question, are you guys even listening?
There's another O'Brien on the list? I'm sorry, ma'am, I can't read your first. Thank you for joining us, welcome.
Pardon me?
I said, "Thank you for joining us, welcome."
Yes, all right. Okay, so I am here in support of parent choice. Plain and simple, that's it. I've never even attended a board meeting. I went through the school district a long time ago, but, you know, this is new. But I'm really glad to be here and to support this. The board rescinded parent choice in their attempt to make mask-wearing mandatory. Attempts to push mask mandates by coercing parents into making their children wear masks in order for their children to attend public school is infringing upon parents' constitutional and fundamental right to custody over their children. It's a parent's choice. All of the choices, no matter which way you go on the masks. Now, we'll go over the big one. In 1947, Dr. Alexander outlined the Nuremberg Code to the United States Council for War Crimes. Since 1947, no one in the United States has the right to force any kind of involuntary medical procedures or medical devices, such as masks, onto any unwilling subject. Of the codes to apply regarding masks and vaccine mandates here: First, voluntary human consent is essential. Second, subjects can withdraw at any time. Dr. Benjamin Rush, a signer of the Declaration of Independence, spoke these prophetic words in 1776. Quote, "The time has come when medicine will organize into an undercover dictatorship to restrict the art of healing to one class of men and deny equal privileges to the other." End quote. There is nothing hidden that will not be disclosed, and nothing concealed that will not be made known and brought to light. I conclude by asking, which one of you are voting to maintain the mask mandate? Thank you.
Kurt Bohis. Mr. Bohis, I'm going to get that right next month.
You're assuming I'm coming back?
All right, so my name is Kurt Bohis, and I'm a Midland resident here with a child enrolled in the district. I'm here on everyone's favorite topic, so the mask mandate. And I'd like to make two points this evening. So first, kind of echoing some of the comments that have already been made, there's been a lack of transparency and representation amongst our elected board members. Few examples: So first, you gave away your own right to directly influence the masking policy of the district by implementing PO8450.01 within the board policies and guidelines. In a nutshell, this gives the superintendent the sole authority to make changes to the masking policy. And so basically, instead of informed discussion amongst elected officials, you've opted for one unelected individual to set a one-size-fits-all policy for the district. This begs the question, is this level of power really needed for something that poses a similar risk to children as a typical respiratory virus? Also, in regards to the lack of representation, there's been no material mentions of COVID in the communiques since our last board meeting. There was mention of podcasts and FAQs, but as we all know, this isn't real engagement. Ultimately, my hope is that voters' opinions are prioritized over the advice received from lawyers and consultants. We need to do what's best for our children. In summary, as you continue to shed responsibility and hide your opinions as elected officials, as a voter, I'd like to see some additional transparency. This leads me to my second point. There've been several requests for you to reveal what your masking mandate policies, your preferred policy would be. So whether that's through a vote, or just sharing it with the community, or whatever else, and the main driver behind that is that, as a voter, we'd like to make sure that we're informed in the upcoming election as your terms come to a close. Thank you.
Okay, we're down to our final speaker on the list this evening. Is it Chase Egan?
Chris.
Chris, I'm sorry. I have a hard time reading it. Chris Egan. Good evening, welcome.
Okay, so last month, I just kind of asked the question, where's our common sense? Why are we letting this get so blown out of proportion when it doesn't need to be? I have been studying both the Open Meetings handbook, as well as a lot of our laws that are currently in place for both our district, our school board, our counties, all the way up through federal. And it boggles my mind what they have been doing as far as taking away our rights, our constitutional rights, and we have to put a stop to that. And that means we put a stop right here, guys. There is nothing in this manual that says, in fact, it says in this manual, we can have a special meeting, we can have a special get-together, and talk about this, and dialogue about this, and ask each other questions. A gentleman over here mentioned that he saw a study. I haven't seen that study. I would like to see that study. Why can't we share information about what we're seeing about this darn virus? I got COVID, I believe, in 2019, before it became the big thing. I have not had any problems with any of the variants that are coming out. I have not had any kind of vaccination. I just deal with it like I've always done. And there are a lot of things that we can utilize, not just a vaccine. We can stop this virus in its tracks when a person contracts it. Once the virus is out there in the community, it's out there, guys. Once people started getting sick, it's too late to try to stop the spread. It's already there. Same with any of the variants, because those little viruses, they're smart little buggers. They try to change themselves. But, and trying to keep up with that with vaccines and trying to rush those through, that's not a good idea. But our immune systems are quite powerful if we give them the right tools. And it isn't always just a vaccine. And in fact, vaccines have never actually stopped any kind of virus. When you look at the Afghani immigrants that were coming over, they started to have to give them the shot for the mumps, because all of a sudden, they were starting to get sick from that. Viruses are still in our environment, and they're here to stay. We just have to learn to deal with them with our own strong immune systems. Thank you.
Okay, that is all I have for folks who have requested to address the board tonight. That is going to move us into our next item on the agenda. Before we do that, is everybody interested in sticking around, or is there going to be a mass exodus? So we can take 30 seconds and let you guys clear out.
Are you guys going to have a discussion at the very end? Because I'll stay up so.
If there's going to be discussion, we'll stay.
Are you going to talk about something we talked about?
There's not going to be a discussion. We're just going to move to what's on the agenda, Mr. Johnson. Thank you, everybody, for speaking tonight. We appreciate it. We'll take 30 seconds. You're certainly welcome to stay. Okay, we're going to move into item five, Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. And we have Study Committee Minutes from Ms. Baker.
Yes, we met on September 22nd. And the first item we discussed was the IB PYP evaluation reports for Adams, Chestnut Hill, Plymouth, and Woodcrest. Jen provided a summary of the International Baccalaureate Primary Years Program Evaluation Reports for Adams, Chestnut Hill, Plymouth, and Woodcrest, including areas of strengths and needed growth. Next, we talked about student texts and resources review process. Members discussed the process for reviewing student resources, including those that will be part of choice units, where students can select one of several texts. The group was informed of the four texts that will be included in an upcoming high school English class. Diversity, Equity, Inclusion Update was next, and Deandre provided a status update about the equity audit process and next steps. He also shared an update about key projects that are underway throughout the district. And our next meeting will be October 27th.
All right, thank you very much. Next up, we are at item six, Finance Facilities and Operations, and we have Study Committee Minutes from Mr. Lauterbach.
Thank you. The FFO committee met on October 4th, 2021. We reviewed the July and August financials. Variances from year to year were highlighted and attributed to COVID-19-related revenues and expenditures. Purchase card and purchase orders were discussed. July and August saw a large amount of open purchase orders, or I'm sorry, see, a large amount of open purchase orders annually due to fiscal year startup operations. We talked about the State Street abatement. Administration will recommend the award tonight. At the October Board of Education meeting, in bond funds will be used if approved. We talked about the timeline for the Eastlon RFP. Bids are due on November 10th and will be reviewed at the December FFO meeting. The administration will propose the purchase of two cargo vans to be utilized by the Maintenance Department. The cost of the vans was built into the 2122 general fund budget. And finally, we discussed the renewal of property and casualty insurance. And the administration will recommend renewing coverage with SETSEG at the October Board of Education meeting, and this is the first renewal of that policy. Our next meeting will be Monday, November 1st at 5:00 PM.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up, we have a series of action items, beginning with item 6.2. This is the State Street abatement. Mr. Bruton.
Thank you, President McFarland. As evidenced by us being here this evening, we have now separated ourselves from State Street with the HVAC equipment, and so it is time for us to start moving for demolition of that building, with the first step being abatement. So we are recommending this evening that we award that project to Quality Environment Services for the amount of $79,000, and this is utilizing Series 2 bond funds if approved.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I will accept the motion regarding item 6.2.
I'll make a motion to accept item 6.2, State Street abatement. Support.
Motion by Mr. Hatfield, support by Mr. Roush. Any further discussion regarding item 6.2? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next up is item 6.3. This is Construction Manager Service Agreement. Again, Mr. Bruton.
Thank you. As has been mentioned in the past meeting and also in our FFO minutes, savings have extended the need for construction manager services beyond the original confines of the contract. We are recommending tonight that we extend the existing construction management services contract with Barton Mallow for the 2022 calendar year with the exact same rate that was specified in the 2015 contract of 5.96%. If approved, Series 2 bond funds will be utilized for this extension.
Okay, thank you. And I will accept the motion regarding item 6.3, sorry.
I move adoption of item 6.3, the renewal of the Construction Manager Service Agreement. Support.
Motion by Mr. Lauterbach, support by Mr. Hatfield. Any further discussion regarding item 6.3?
Yes. Under 6.3, it says savings have extended the need for construction management. In our extension, we're talking about $4 million worth of technology.
Brad, no, it's Series 3.
Okay.
So we have, and we'll give you, we are working on bringing you the exact total, but it's well over $3 million. It's bid-savings, it's contingency and interest from Series 1 and 2 bonds, which will continue to do construction.
Okay.
The projects are large, need to be bid, reviewed, designed. And so between that and what we spend in general fund, we only have one director of operation left. The district wanted to add 3, we don't think we can put that burden on them and accomplish it in a year's time.
Okay.
And this was all reviewed at FFO.
So where's the list for us?
The list of?
This $4 million we're going to be spending, that is part of savings.
Well, you keep using 3, and I, or 4, and I haven't used 4 at any point in time. So the exact dollars is coming forward, and the list of projects will be coming forward as well, so.
Well, this says, "I'm pleased to submit the following proposal for your consideration to extend the Barton Mallow Builders Contract for Construction Management Services for the 2022 calendar year. The cost of this work, including contingency and general conditions, is estimated at $4 million."
Estimated at $4 million, and I've used the terms of over 3, and we'll bring the exact dollar amount forward to you.
So what is it? What are the projects?
We don't know yet. We have to, so we had $4 million in savings left over from Series 1 and 2. We got to figure out how to spend it within the confines of a bond that upgrade the district, per what the voters gave us. It all has to be within the bond language, and meet the bond needs. We have reviewed some of those items and talked about some fencing needs, some roofing needs. Those issues, the exact projects will be coming forward.
Okay, so if you look over the Barton Mallow executive summary of what we just received, that we approved in this consent agenda, Series 1, 2, and 3 shows a total spend of $91,600,000 for Barton Mallow's total. The Midland Public School bond application approved total for same said schools is $107 million, a difference of $16 million. Do we have $16 million worth of work yet to do?
We do not.
Okay.
So I'm not sure.
Also, see that we are.
I have no clue what numbers you're using, Brad.
These are the totals in the executive summary.
You said Series 3, and that is not.
Series 1, 2, and 3 totaled.
3 has not been sold. It is technology and busing.
Right.
So Barton Mallow would not be included in that. So we are talking.
Barton Mallow is not going to be a part of Series 3 at all?
Correct. They have a one-year contract with the leftover funds from Series 1 and 2, which came from bid savings, contingency, and interest.
Is that listed in the executive summary from Barton Mallow to show us this $4 million that we have yet to do in construction?
Is, are you asking, is the dollars listed in the summary? Brad, there's 16 pages in the summary. You'd have to go through.
I summarized them myself.
Well, you're putting me on the spot without giving me notice on that. But I will tell you that Lori and Barton Mallow are working on bringing you the exact dollar amount before we go forward. So with all the balancing, it needs to be done.
My issue might be with the total spend, then. The Barton Mallow total spend predicted for 1, 2, and 3 combined together in that summary is $91 million.
Series 1 and 2 is what Barton Mallow is involved in.
All the dollars are listed for Series 3 in part of the summary. So we have a huge separation of what the Barton Mallow total is that we approve.
You're using the total bond, total bond dollars.
For our schools.
You're using the total bond dollars, Brad, which is Series 3. We are not talking about that. That is not in Barton Mallow's contract.
I understand that. I'm asking.
What is left is over 3, could be as high as 4, the exact dollars are coming. What is left is over 3, could be as high as 4, the exact dollars are coming to you, and the exact projects are coming to you. This is a staffing plan for Barton Mallow to manage those projects, construction manager those projects we have at the 5%, so over 5%.
And you're going to be bringing those forward to us?
Soon.
Soon.
The dollars, dollars number.
But we're going to approve the construction manager before we approve the projects.
Do you not need a construction manager?
I don't know. I don't know what the projects are.
Okay. Brad, bottom line is, we know where you stand. Vote no tonight on it, okay? Because we can move on and do what we have to do as a district. The projects are coming forward. It's 5% of the total fee.
I can vote my help.
And if you're uncomfortable, vote no.
If I can just offer an observation, Brad. We got the board packet last week. We all get it in advance of the meeting. And as Phil said, this is a, this, just this spreadsheet, just the executive summary is a 16-page spreadsheet. I think we all read in advance of the meeting. And if we have questions, we say, hey, Mike, I got a question. He can then do the homework before the meeting, be prepared to answer your question. When you wait until the meeting, and I understand, it's, I understand transparency is important, but when you wait until the meeting to ask the question, you can't expect him to be able to cite chapter and verses 16-page spreadsheet. So if you want him to do the research, that's fine, but we're not going to have it before you vote on it. If you want it before you vote on it, ask him before the meeting so that he can include it in his report to the board, and you can vote accordingly. I mean, is there some other way that you think this should work?
Sure.
I'd just like to make a comment. One of the very first things that you learn if you go to the School Board Workshop is you never, ever put the superintendent on the spot when you have had a chance to re, not on the spot.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you, Brad.
I'd appreciate if you'd let me finish. It's not putting him on the spot to catch him. It is, you've got 16 pages of information. Mike has a huge job. I don't know that your employees could, would want to put you on the spot when you had, you're the one that asked for our reports to come on Wednesday, not Friday. You have almost a whole week. Why can't you pick up the phone and call Mike and say, I'd like to discuss this? Then bring the basics to the meeting. It's not to hide anything, it's to give Mike and Brian and our, and the administrative staff and the business office a chance to do their homework, which we have hired them for. That is what I mean by putting on the spot. It's not to hide anything. I don't want somebody coming to me in a workplace and asking me a question that I haven't had a chance to reasonably find the true, accurate answer.
Brad, there's nothing wrong with the questions you're asking. It's all legitimate information. But in terms of process, it seems fair, not just to Mike, but to the rest of the board, that if you have a question that you want him to address at the meeting, get your board packet, read it, ask the question, so that Mike can come prepared to discuss it at the board meeting. That's all, that's all I got.
All good questions. But there's a process that's gone on over the years. And Mike, you can share it with them, or I can share it.
What process?
I ask a question. I've sent questions to Pam. I've sent questions to Scott, predominantly to Pam. Pam sends the question to the superintendent. And then the superintendent sends the question to Barton Mallow, our construction manager and French associates, our engineering firm, for comment review. Their response is then sent back to the superintendent. If the superintendent approves, then he takes the response to the district's FFDC Committee, a committee of the Midland Public School Administration Group. If they approve it, then it's brought to the Board of Education Finance Facilities and Operations Committee for approval. If then they approve the response, it is posted directly to the website, and I wasn't contacted. That's how it's gone in the past.
Brad, these questions don't even fit that. The question you're asking, if you would have asked ahead of time, what the total dollar amount, we probably could have gone and got that. Lori and Barton Mallow are balancing all their spreadsheets to bring that total dollar. If you would have asked us, Brian could have chased that down. But putting me on the spot to look at 16 pages off the top of my head to give you the exact dollar amount is impossible.
I'm asking where the money is coming from.
Series 1 and 2. Contingency, interest, bid savings. We said it for five months.
Okay.
Then we have over $3 million in that pot. The exact parts come forward. We've talked, even talked about a broad base of the projects. That's how you approved the original construction manager contract. It was a broad base of projects that fit the bond language. This is the same thing, asking for staffing for Barton Mallow to do that again for one year for the dollar amount yet to come, 3 to 4 million dollars. It doesn't matter because it's 5% of that dollar amount that they get for servicing us on that. The information is there. If you want more, if I had that on Wednesday, we probably could have got it for you. I can't walk into meetings and pop it off the top of my head and be accurate.
So we don't have, I'm just surprised, we don't have a listing of what these future, future projects are?
If you would have asked me that, I could have brought you the broad list. But as you know, the exact work and all that comes to you after it's gone review, designed, because that changes in that design review process, and the exact bids, as you are doing for this abatement tonight, is approved with the deck details that you are looking for. If you would have asked me that prior, because we have those and we've talked about them in FFO, we could have told you, you've read them in the minutes. Some of them are in the minutes in the past. Haven't we, Brian? Fencing, roofing.
Parking lot.
Parking lot, that's a big one next door, the bus and grounds transportation. Several of those kind of projects. Track resurfacing at Dow High. We could have gave them to you. I can't do it on Monday night with no notice, walking into a board meeting, not knowing what your questions are going to be. And you can ask them in here, just look, tell them to go do the research so I can bring them in and answer you.
Okay.
And I know you don't care for Barton Mallow. They've done a great job, and you have a right to vote that way.
I think we have multiple opinions of how they have done.
And I'll stand clearly, they performed outstanding.
Okay?
Okay, moving beyond opinions, anything else?
Nope.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next up, moving on, Mr. Bruton, we have item 6.4. This is a maintenance van purchase.
Yes, sir, actually, too. We are recommending the award for the purchase of two 2022 Ford Transit 250 cargo vans that also includes the contractor packages. We are recommending this award to Signature Ford Lincoln of Owasso for a total price of $36,857,000 each, bringing that up to $73,714 total for the award. If approved, these vehicles will be assigned to the Maintenance Department. And as was mentioned in the FFO minutes, this purchase was budgeted for in the 2122 general fund.
Okay, thank you. I will accept the motion regarding item 6.4.
Make a motion to approve the purchase of the two maintenance vans as outlined in section 6.4.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Roush, support by Mr. Lauterbach. Any discussion regarding item 6.4?
How long will it take us to get these vans?
It's a great question, John. The previous van has not arrived yet. We're still on the phone calling. We are now down, we had a frame breakdown. As you know, we ran those green vans about 25 years. Frame broke. We are down one vehicle where our guys are riding together. And so we are on the horn about what, where are we in the pecking order of the truck? It's a great question. We'll get you more as we go.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. Next up, continuing, Brian, we have another action item, property and casualty insurance renewal.
Thank you. We are recommending this evening for the first renewal of our policy with SETSEG of East Lansing, Michigan, for the district's property and casualty insurance. This renewal will be for a price of $239,014. It's a one-year policy extension, which expires on November 1st of 2022. And the details of the coverage were provided in the attachments to the board minutes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Make a motion to approve item 6.5, extension of the property and casualty insurance.
I'll support. Sorry, renewal, not extension.
Motion by Mr. Roush, support by Mr. Hatfield. Any discussion regarding item 6.5?
Brian, how's it vary from last year?
Approximately 11%.
The pool generally gives you a rebate from the previous year, and that is yet to be determined, but it appears we're in line for a rebate as well from the previous year. Probably comes close to covering the increase, so my bad.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. We are, I think, probably reaching a point where we need, may need to extend for 15 minutes.
Yeah, you can probably do.
Make, make a motion to extend to 9:45.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Roush to extend, support by Ms. Baker. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. We are extended up to 9:45 at this point. Thank you very much. We will move on. We have another action item, 6.6, gifts. Mr. Bruton.
Thank you. We are recommending that the board accepts on our behalf a gift from the HH Dow High School Sports Boosters for $7,500 for support of sports equipment.
Okay. Thank you. Take a motion for 6.6.
Will we approve item 6.6?
Support.
Motion by Mr. Hatfield, support by Mr. Lauterbach. Any discussion regarding item 6.6? Other than, thank you very much.
Can I do a question?
Yes.
Why are the sports boosters buying all the balls for the, for the, for the high school sports? Plays and tech included in the budget?
So we give them a general budget, John, and they choose to spend the dollars at the building level where they want that. So this must have been a choice of what could be covered by boosters versus what their general fund budget covers. So this is their choice, not ours.
Okay, so that's something we follow up with the building about?
Sure we can.
Just wondering why, why balls wouldn't be included as part of the general budget? Because you kind of need them to play.
Yeah, no, I would assume it's just a choice that maybe it was an easier one to take to the boosters, and this one was being paid this way. I'm not sure, but that is.
Yeah, I think that's something I'd like to know more about.
It's a building level choice.
Cool. Thank you.
Okay. All in favor, 6.6, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have information only, item 6.7. Mr. Bruton.
Yes, we'll extend our gratitude to 15 generous donors to acknowledge gifts totaling $15,450. And a review of the agenda will reveal that these gifts range from widespread sport, supports for Northeast Robotics to several community gives service program grants. As is tradition, all will be acknowledged through board correspondence and also in our meeting credits. And we do remain thankful for the generosity of our community with these gifts.
Okay. Thank you. All right, that takes us to item 7, Human Resources. And we have committee minutes from October 14th, 2021. Mr. Roush?
Yes, the HR committee met on October 14th. On the agenda, we covered and reviewed current pay rates for each employee group and included discussion around off-cycle pay scale increases due to current labor market, district job postings, and upcoming recruitment events, which was a second item. Third item was a Pfizer Booster Clinic for our staff. Number four was substitute teacher shortages and solutions. Actually discussed various options there for administration to address. And then finally, discuss the pending OSHA emergency temporary standard as it affects our district. Next meeting will be December 9th at 10:00 AM.
All right, thank you very much. Next up is item 7.2. We have an action item. This is the Midland Federation of Paraprofessionals contract. Mr. Bruton.
Thank you, sir. As you saw in the last meeting, and we have informed you, we've approached all of our employees that have hourly wages. This is the final employee group for us to look at adjusting those wages. We approached this group, the federal, the Federation of Paraprofessionals, to do a wage opener only. This is not an extension of the contract. The contract expires at the conclusion of next school year. This was simply to reexamine the wage scale and the wage structure as well. So in your board packet, you've seen that we proposed a restructuring of how the step scale tiered across the board, as well, when you average it out, approximately a 12% pay increase across each of those wages. So we are recommending to you this evening to adopt this addendum to the wages of the Federation of Paraprofessionals. If adopted this evening, it would come into effect on the very next payroll.
Excellent, thank you.
Mr. Make a motion to approve the contract opener for Midland Federation Paraprofessionals.
Support.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Roush, support by Mr. Frizzi. Any discussion regarding item 7.2?
Well deserved. They work hard.
It is. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Next up, information only, item 7.3, the below staff members have announced their retirement effective these dates. Mr. Jaster.
Thank you, Mr. McFarland. There's only one employee to recognize tonight, that's Ms. Tammy Williams. Had been a bus driver in our Transportation Department, and her retirement was effective September 1st, 2021. And if it's okay, I'll continue to 7.4. In memoriam, the board and staff extend their deepest sympathy to the following families, and sadly, it's a longer list this month than we are used to. The first is Ms. Marilyn. Teachers and colleagues knew her as Mickey, a Dan. She passed away September 22nd, 2021. She had been a teacher for Midland Public Schools and retired in 2016 with 25 years of service. Also, Ms. Mary Fitch. She retired in 1992 with 32 years of service. She had been a teacher in the district for her entire career. Also, Mr. Thomas L. Miller passed away August 21st, 2021. He was a teacher and coach for the Midland Schools. He retired in 2000 with 30 years of service to the district. And then Ms. Delsey White, who passed away August 18th, 2021. Delsey served as a speech language pathologist for Midland Schools, retired in 1990 with 15 years of service.
Thank you. Okay. Next in the agenda is item 8. This is correspondence to and from the Board of Education. The letters from the Board of Education to a number of entities can be found under 8.1. Under 8.2 are letters to the Board of Education from the Mackinac Center and Grant Hallazon. Next up is item 9. These are scheduled activities, information only. It lists under 9.1 our remaining minute, our meetings for the year, November 22nd and December 20th. And it also provides a tentative until approved schedule for 2022, which will be done in the organizational meeting direct following. That will bring us to our study discussion session. Are there any points of clarification that we need to talk about before I turn the floor over to Mike for his closing comments?
I had a question, Scott. In the Midland Daily News, it's a state of the schools, is that what it's called? The insert from Midland Public Schools? That goes in the Midland Daily News?
There's a portion of it, yeah.
There was a part that mentioned the bond update, and then there was a link that you click on that, and it goes to the regular MPS Bond Update page. And then there was a change to that. Scrolled down, and I saw updated bond worklist, updated 10/21. I don't think anything else has changed on that. I don't think anything else has changed on that. So then I clicked that open and I was looking at it, and it seems like most things on here are colored green that are, say, completed or awarded projects. So my question is, is this an MPS document, or is this a Barton Mallow document that colors all this stuff green?
It is our document.
Okay. Well, I think that I just picked a page and I looked at one thing, and it was some work here at the administration building, and some of those things are colored green, but they haven't been done yet. So I think we have to look at this a little bit closer. I think maybe some of those things are going to get approached in these upcoming dollars.
Anything highlight, highlighted was either completed or have been approved to be completed.
Okay. Because I see upgrade site lighting here at this building, which-
That's improved to be completed. That's in the performance contract.
So this update includes the performance contract as well as the people's hundred and twenty-two and a half million? So they're both combined?
Well, it says completed or awarded. It doesn't say completed.
Right, so I'm just asking. I thought this was-
So when you, when we did the performance contract, lighting-
So you're including those things in here?
Lighting went there. Correct, because it'll be completed.
Okay. I thought this was just building project work list from the original bond. So I was-
I think you know that we did some of that through general fund. We've done some through various different sources to complete all those projects.
Okay. So all those things are going to be things in here that, that's kind of a big list. I don't think some of those things have been handled yet, but we can talk about that offline. Just want to double check.
Give me a specific example?
Replace bus block heater system, upgrade the site lighting, upgrade exterior building mounting, I mean, and the interior lighting as well, as well as motion sensors. I mean, it's, it's five hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars worth of work.
Motion sensors are done, LED lighting's in. As I reported, about ninety percent of the project is done yet. The rest of it is to be completed. Controls and the site lighting outside is yet to be completed. So it's accurate.
So the bus block heater system, though, I don't think is something that we ever did. But regardless, I was asking because I know outside of here, we, I see we have a hundred and twenty thousand, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars worth of a lot of dollars that we haven't done anything is when you'll notice when you walk outside. But hopefully that'll look better when we're done.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks, Brad. Mike, I think the floor is yours.
Talking about RFPs and work on East Lawn Site, RFP's been posted by our third-party consultant on that, and he's reported pretty good feedback. If you recall, that will come to our FFO committee. We're not committed to do anything, but it's a chance, opportunity for them to review the plans that submitted for that property. And it, ultimately, it is our decision. It is not the community foundation or the cities, but they've been partners with us in making that occur. And FFO, then if they approve one of those, then we'll come to the full Board of Education. So that timeline's still in place, and I think it closes next week. If you still, and I think everyone saw, it was mentioned tonight, Dame in the County did order quarantine and isolation protocol. So previously, it was recommended. It is now placed and ordered. There were small changes to it in the number, what days to be tested and what day masking may occur, but we were, our policy that we were following the recommended policy was basically the same policy, but is now in order at this point in time. So it's now an option to be carried forward at all. And that, that really came out of Meridian Public Schools not following his recommendation. And so he wanted to clean that up, to get that cleaned up, and all is on the same page going forward. The energy bond performance, I wrote you a little bit about that. About ninety percent complete in most buildings. Midland High, Jefferson, and Northeast Lighting has not occurred and is beginning to occur on B shift. And so, as Brad said, there's quite a bit of work still left to be done. Mostly lighting, though. The bulk of that project was separation from State Street and the HVAC and lighting in this building. So the bulk of those funds were there. The, the performance part of that won't kick until next spring until all equipment's in place, and then the measurement will begin to go. And so we'll try to keep you up to date as we gather that information from our software that we were working with SiteLogic that will monitor those pieces of it. Equity audit, we provided you a very brief summary of that midterm. If you recall, the final piece comes in January. Presently, the focus groups are being formed and nearly completed, and they will be meeting with focus groups of students, staff, parents, community members to get that piece of that as well. All that will come forward. You saw some of the things that they said were strengths, some of the things that were weaknesses, and you'll get a full report from Deandre in January, at our January board meeting is our plan. Fall Student Count Day looked pretty good. As you know, that's a long auditing process for us and generally certified probably by-
Couple weeks.
Couple more weeks, and we'll, we'll know the exact amount. Appears to be at budget or above budget level. So fall count was pretty reasonable. That's all I have for you.
Okay. Thank you very much. I will take a motion to adjourn.
Hey, Scott, we had twenty-three people come up here and, and looking for a-
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two, twenty-three above mask, thirty-two total. Anything that we can do to, until the decision is brought to this board or we decide to have a vote, how that's going to come about? Is there any additional data or a avenue? As the last lady had stated, I'd like to see those studies and/or the data from people that are presenting things. There's a lot of, lot of information out there, and I guess what is our path moving forward? We have a lot of people that are looking for answers for this, and is that going to be a discussion in one of our subcommittees?
I don't know that it'll be a discussion in any subcommittee that I'm part of. Just because the subcommittees I'm part of wouldn't have that discussion. I, we, you know, you know as well as I do, we rely on the administration to have daily contact with the health authorities, and they confer amongst each other, disseminate information, and bring recommendations to the board and seek counsel from the board.
Okay.
So-
I don't think we have any problem, I don't think we have any problem with what came about was that Friday?
No, because we, we were very close to that. It actually-
Right. We don't have any issue with that. That's-
No.
Transparent to what we've been doing.
They moved from the testing for non-vaccinated from Jeff, Jeff, Stefan, if I said this wrong, from day three to five to day five through seven, and then they lifted the masking. It was fourteen days and could take the mask off at ten. Those were the two main changes. So all favorable, not an issue for us. We're in that. So Brad, if you, if you want this decision made in front of you, so be it, because I'll be glad to hand it off. And people can take target at me. I'm a big boy. I've been doing this a damn long time. I'm not afraid to make decisions. It never happened. And so I, I made the decision because the board policy, and by the way, most state board policy says superintendent, it was an emergency order put in place because of the pandemic last year. And so I made, I conferred with all of you, made that decision. In my mind, be glad to do it the same way. I told, I gave you a little bit of insight what I was thinking, and will confer if that's right or not. I would love to see vaccines being available for, for the other parents who feel their children need to be kept safe. If they have the choice to vaccinate, if they have the choice to still put their mask on, I, I feel that, that, and I've recommended that all along. So if you remember, we started the school year based on that premise all the way through. If children are able, parents are able to choose vaccination, they can put a double layer of mask if they feel, choose to do so, then I feel like we can move, move forward in the world. So I would love to hear what that announcement's going to be next week. What is the protocol for that? As far as my personal opinion, as soon as the shot's available, I'd love to lift it. If people think we should go to wait two, the second shot, fine, and I'm good with that. And I'll confer with the seven of you, but I have no problem making that decision either. You pay me to do that. And people can be angry at with me, and, and, and I'm going to get anger on both ways. It's either way.
That's a given. We understand that.
And I'm, and I understand that, and I understand that. And I pull my head up high, and every day I look myself in the mirror and know I've done the best for almost forty years for kids, and I will do, do so. So, and by the way, the law does say I need to keep kids protected. It does say that. It's just the opposite. It says I must as a superintendent. And so I sign an oath to that. And so, and we're all mixed up on what exactly that protection is today. And I get it, guys. I get it both ways. And if you don't know where I lean, then you haven't been paying attention, because I, it's very clear, Riley, I don't have a mask on tonight, and I start the school year with choice. So it's funny. I get condemned from both sides, and you guys now know that. And so I, I'm okay with that. I took the job that way, and, and we'll do that. But that's where I see it going forward. If you guys aren't comfortable with it, I can bring it. You can vote. You can do whatever you would like to do. But I, but that's the way I see, see the path going forward. That's what your present policy says. All far as all the studies and stuff that thrown at you, I have read. Everything there can be read on this disease for two years, and every study, and you're right, it's all over the board. John, we've had a long discussion because John spent hours and hours reading every study he could and questioning health officials at the health office, and I know many of you have. And so we can, we can, there's just so much data on this, and there's no absolute on this. And so I think we're coming out of it, and I think my personal opinion is we all will have the ability to choose a vaccination. We all have to choose the mask, and it's probably the route that America's going to go forward until we at least get this number down. And I happen to agree with many of you who said that it's probably never going to go away, or at least in our lifetime. Okay? And so I understand all of that.
So on the mat, when the, excuse me, when the vaccination becomes available, are we going to circle back at this point?
Yes. That's, that's what I intended to do.
Okay.
Circle back with all you, and not everything, and you know, decisions are required by law in front of you. My decision can be discussions with you to help me with my thinking, and I work for you. I owe that to all of you. And then I make a decision. And if you don't want me to make a decision, I also work for you, and you tell me not to make that decision.
Okay.
They work for you. So that's what your present policy-
For whatever it's worth. For whatever it's worth. I, for one, have appreciated Mike's communication with the board. He's met routinely with the health professionals in our community that have training and expertise, public health, communicable disease. And there's never been a time where I thought he was not acting based on advice from professionals. There's a lot of stuff that you can read on the internet that will validate your opinion, but the four professionals that we heard from last month and the trained professionals in our community are the people that we all rely on for our own healthcare, for our places of business, the places of business that we run. And Mike has routinely been in communication with them, understanding that there are obviously lots of opinions out there. But-
Hey, guys, the board's listened real quietly tonight. Please allow them to speak, please.
To the extent that people want to hear where at least one of us stands, that, that's been my position all along, for a year and a half now, more than that. Mike has been updating us on the communication that he gets from the Midland County Health Department, from Mid-Michigan Health, and the professionals in our community. And if, if I thought for one second that he wasn't acting consistent with professional advice, I'd, I'd feel differently. I don't. We hired him to do a job. He's doing a nearly impossible job. He's got, he's getting pummeled from both, from three sides. And, you know, I, I appreciate the, the opinions that have been expressed, but I continue to believe that Mike's doing the, the best job that he can under the circumstances, and I will continue to endorse his opinion unless I, unless his, unless and until I hear otherwise. Upset, for me.
Okay.
And I think, just want to address the transparency discussion briefly. Now, after the last board meeting, we set on FAQ, two of them. One on COVID, which had studies in it cited, as well as one on DEI. That was step one. I read, and I think I speak for every other board member here, every single email that comes. Some of them, if they have a question directed to me, I may choose to engage. One of the individuals tonight, Mr. Bohice, I brought a beer over to his house. He accused us of not being transparent. I don't know how much more transparent I can be in that situation. And I think, you know, one of the challenges that we all have is there's seven of us. Every one of you probably has a personal relationship with one of us. You can use it. I know, John, you spent a ride to Lansing when you were teaching a class in law school with one of the parents of our district. So I think continue to reach out. We will engage. I have. And I think I speak for everybody else here that has engaged in some manner. And sometimes you don't like what we have to say, and I get that, but, you know, we are one community, and we're willing to listen and try to lead with transparency.
And to your point, Phil, these people who are showing up aren't the only people who are concerned, have the concerns, and who are reaching out to us on a regular basis, asking our opinions, engaging us, trying to question us, trying to push us to make decisions and understand how the questions are made. So we appreciate the fact that everyone has shown up and that you guys have shown up month after month after month. That takes some real dedication, and we do appreciate it. And it's very, it's enlightening to hear what you have to say. I've taken notes on what every single person has said for every meeting that I've been at, and I have in my notebook, and I do refer to them on a regular basis. But you guys aren't the only ones who have opinions that are being shared with us. So there is transparency. And, yep, and from that standpoint, you know, we want to continue.
But, but what-
Guys, we have literally ten seconds, or we have to extend again.
Extend for five minutes. I move to extend for five minutes.
I support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're extended five minutes.
I, I want to, I have had several phone conversations with a lot of folks. In fact, one person that, the person that Phil referred to, I haven't met face to face. I don't know if she's here tonight, but they've been very, they've been very cordial conversations. It's been fantastic. What, the, the tenor of the communication outside this boardroom is totally different than it is during public comment. But the, the one thing that, that I, I don't know how else to say, I don't know how to say anymore politely. The fact that we're not doing what you want us to do doesn't mean we're not listening to you. We're listening to you. We're listening to the parents of seven thousand other kids, too. And there are, as I said, there are at least three different distinct points of view. So all due respect, a town hall meeting where we continue to hear the same thing over and over and over, when we've told you what the, what the, the decision-making process is, I, I don't know if it's going to be all that helpful.
We just want to know what you feel. You told us, but we appreciate. So we'd like to go along with the other board members.
I, I personally support Mike. What he has done personally. I don't have kids in the school here, but I talk to my kids that have grandchildren, my neighbors. I talk to them, my daughter-in-law who works in pediatrics and is, they're seeing a huge rise in children in their intensive care. So I do, I do my research, but we all have different ways of doing our research. We all have different experiences. We all have different ideas. But at this point, me personally, I am all for choice. I put five kids through Midland Public Schools, and I trust them. I trusted them all the time. We didn't always agree, but what Mike said tonight and looking forward and hoping we can give you that full choice again, I, I will support that definitely. My, my kids and grandkids, even the two-year-old, she didn't like wearing a mask, but she has to wear a mask, you know? And her mom is a pediatric pulmonology P.A. She knows. She lives it every day. I hope that helps.
Thanks, Lynn. And guys, hold on for one second. Let me just apologize on behalf of the board for those folks who left, because I told them there would not be any discussion. I did not anticipate this. So I, I don't want Will losing his mind because we had some conversation about this and then, you know, ripping us up and down on Facebook. You know, I, I agree with John's position, and, you know, it's Mike's call to make. That is exactly what our policy states, and that's why we hired him. And any board class offered through the MASB will tell a board member who attends that class that that is the administrative function, one of the administrative functions of the superintendent. And I, I agree with the comments thus far that, that I think Mike has done a great job. And he's the one in direct contact with the people, with the medical experts. And so I will trust his recommendation again until given a reason otherwise. So, and, and I, I think the, the rest of the board, maybe except for Mr. Blazy, would agree with that position as well. And guys, if you feel otherwise.
I've been in constant communication with Mike, sometimes on a daily basis, sometimes a little bit less, but at no point have I strayed. I've asked a lot of questions, and he knows that. I've probably erred on the side of caution a little bit more than he has, you know? I was, we, we as a family chose to put our son in a mask his first day of school. He never once complained about it. I washed it every day. It's not a big deal.
I disagree with Mike on a lot of things, but I, and he knows that, but I, I support him, and I support his right to make that decision. And until I learn otherwise, I'll continue to support him.
Well, I think everyone thinks we all agree on everything. It's not the way it works. But if we all did our job, we walk in this meeting prior, kind of knowing where we all stand. And Brad, if I can gather information to help you with that, please let me do that, because getting caught trying to figure out what, what I need to bring- getting caught trying to figure out what, what I need to bring you to make you comfortable is hard. But, you know, I think some people see this, and they don't understand. All of you do a great job of questioning, and always have. I mean, I've worked with 50 board members in my career now, and I, I, most of them do a fantastic job. They review the report back, they ask questions, they call me constantly. And as you know, I try to communicate continuously with you, and so a big part of my job is handling seven individuals who represent the community.
It just, my final comment is, because I, I've seen it out there in Facebook land that I don't have kids in the district and I don't care. I actually have four kids in the district, three of whom are affected by the mask mandate. So I like it as much as you guys do, so I don't want, I don't want that out there saying I'm, I don't care because I'm, I'm a disinterested person in the district. Okay? So that's it. We are out of time, guys.
Motion adjourned. Support.
We stand adjourned. Thank you.